It is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, August the 20th, 2024. We are at Granberry City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street in Granberry, Texas. We have now called a order. We're going to go ahead and move to the invocation. Mr. Terry Louven, chaplain for the Hood County Sheriff's Office, will stand, and then we will stand for the pledges.
Father, because you are the holy and just Creator, all of the world and everyone who dwells on it belongs to you. We declare that all referenced in Psalm 24:1 includes Granberry, Texas, and the surrounding territory. You are Lord over Granberry. We declare your promise that your city, Granberry, will continue to overflow with prosperity. Lord, please cultivate and increase the burden and desire within our hearts because you have been sent to preach truth and to love your people. We thank you for this amazing city, its people, and the territory that you have given us to steward. We do not take this mantle lightly, and we intentionally take authority and we claim Granberry for your glory. You have said in your word that no city divided against itself will continue to stand. Therefore, in the mighty name of Christ Jesus, we rebuke you, spirit of division, over Granberry, and we command you to flee. We cancel all of the assignments of the enemy against this great city. Thank you, Father God, that you are completely abolishing the schemes and tactics of those who would stir up division, strife, and violence in our city. You are delivering and defending our city and saving it out of the hands of the enemy for your sake and for the sake of your people in Granberry. Father, we release unity and peace, and we declare that you alone are our peace and are bound in unity. You have made us one body in this city, and you have destroyed every hostile wall between us. We declare that your people in this city are eager to guard and keep the unity and the oneness of the Spirit. Lord, we declare that every church, ministry, and business that glorifies you within this city experience supernatural favor and that their impact, strategies, and effectiveness grows exponentially. We declare fresh, creative thoughts and ideas to be birthed in the minds of spiritual leadership of this city. Father, because you have promised that your people would renew cities, we boldly declare that every area of physical or spiritual ruin in our city is renewed by your mighty power. We call forth the supernatural power of your Spirit to flow into this city and affect every level of society and culture. You alone, God Almighty, transform and renew all things, causing repentance and change of heart, change that will continue and endure. We declare that you are God of this city. We affirm that there is a shift in our atmosphere and that there is a spiritual climate in our city that glorifies you alone. We cover every gateway and every entry and every exit point of our territory with the sacrifice of Jesus. In the name of Jesus Christ, we claim and speak blessings over our city, leadership, emergency services, school district, industries, businesses, churches, nonprofit organizations, and the entire population from conception to death. Father, we declare and call forth the vision of Granberry's godly leadership, and we stand in agreement with them that Granberry is a great city. Just as shepherds and wise men were led to Jesus at his birth by a bright shining star, we declare that the people in Granberry will be led and drawn to a genuine relationship with you, and we affirm Granberry as a city that glorifies God. Thank you, Father, that you are raising up men and women in righteousness and directing them how to build up the city of Granberry for your name's sake and for your glory. We declare your Holy Spirit is here and actively at work. In Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to move right into recognition, proclamation, and presentation. With this 107-degree temperature that we have, we're going to recognize every person that we have that's working outside in any way, form, or fashion. Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to recognize the workers that are out in this heat and hopefully taking refuge in the hottest part of the day, but there are tasks and duties that have to be done in these unusual circumstances, and so we want to thank them tonight. And also want to thank the chamber for being here tonight. They completed the 50th celebration. I think somebody else is going to talk about that, but I can't brag on our chamber enough and the successful events that you guys have put on for decades for the city. And so, many thanks. And we're going to miss you, Brian. Sorry you're leaving us, but we know you're on for greener pastures. So I'll release my time a little bit and let y'all talk.
Counsel.
Mayor.
Mr. Vail.
We have the pleasure of having some terrific staff here in the city, and I want to recognize both Carla Walker, our city secretary, who's sitting up here tonight, and also Miki Matlock. She's our deputy city secretary. They just do an amazing job of managing a multitude of responsibilities and requests that come into the city office. And of course, they, you know, they keep all of us straight up here and keep us all informed. I don't think we recognize them enough for all the great work that they do, so I wanted to do that tonight, and we thank you, Carla, for all that you and Miki do.
That's right. Absolutely. Mayor. Buddy. Mr. Gorgon.
We'd just like to say thank you to all of our first responders, our firefighters, our police, and our EMS. Those of you that don't follow it or don't know, over the last two weeks, we have had some pretty significant accidents here in Hood County. The most helicopters that we've ever landed in Hood County at one time was six, and this past week, we landed four. So not only are they doing that, putting themselves on the line to protect the public, but they're also doing it in extreme heat and temperatures and not complaining about it and doing it well. So just wanted to say thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah. No? Anyone? Yeah. Okay. Well, I'm going to come down to the front, and Mr. Bondi, if you would meet me there.
I missed the color palette.
I'm down here on the front so that I can give this microphone to you. Yeah. So keep it the rest of the night, if you will.
Thank you, Mayor. So this past July 4th, the Chamber went a little bit further in becoming the celebration capital of Texas. We celebrated our 50th hometown Fourth of July celebration, 50th. Now, put that in perspective, folks. There's a lot of communities in this state and in this country that haven't celebrated the Fourth of July, the independence of our country even, one year lately. And to think that some leaders in this community, Jean Kate and her husband and a few others, came up with the idea to have a parade in 1974, and that the Chamber has been a part of that for 50 years, is something to behold. And this year was no exception. We had 117 entries in the parade. We had over 70 vendors out on the square. We had fireworks, and we had a laser light show and live entertainment. We can't do it without a partnership. And that partnership starts right here at the city of Granberry, from the mayor, from city council, and especially city staff. Public works, streets, police department, parks and recreation, permits. There isn't a part of the city that doesn't touch this event, and it can't go off without them. And because this was our 50th anniversary, we were fortunate enough to work together with our sponsors and create a 50th anniversary challenge coin. And we want to present those coins to every member of city council and also leave some for city staff, that city manager Chris Kaufman can present those to them, and if we need more, we'll get those. Because it's partnerships like this that make the city strong. It's partnerships like this that make people want to come here and celebrate and help us become the celebration capital of Texas. So on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, to the city of Granberry, thank you. We are truly honored to partner with you and look forward to many more years to come. Mayor?
Thank you. It is an honor to have the 50th. Is Miss Kate in the audience today, tonight? I tell you, Miss Kate, Jean Kate, is just a, you know, that's, we all want to be Jean Kate when we get a little older. She's outstanding. So thank you. All right. We are going to move to public comments on agenda items for non-public hearing items, agenda items, and we have no public hearings tonight, so any of the agenda items are good. Speakers have a time limit of up to three minutes allotted for comments regarding the agenda items that are not listed as public hearing. Public hearing comments will be recognized when the public hearing is opened. And I'm going to open with, there it is, Mr. Jeff Law. Mr. Law also asked that we pass these to the council. And Mr. Law, if we, as we get into the agenda item, I think 7.3 down the road, if you're still in the building, you'd be more than welcome to come and continue to speak. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and city council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Jeff Law. I'm the chief appraiser of the Hood Central Appraisal District, and I have passed some information to you pertaining to item 7.3. I don't really want to go into any details right now. I just want to make myself available to answer any questions that you may have when it comes time to address that matter.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Law, and I spent about an hour and a half together this past Monday going over the budget, going over different aspects of the budget. We'd be talking through those, but I'll be happy to tell you that there is a staff, too, that you could be commending as it relates to just doing fine and professional work in the county of Hood. The young ladies in the area, the young men that are over there, they step forward. I have never walked in there or asked for a product that has not been delivered professionally and completely in just a very, very short time. So thank you, Mr. Law, for the service that those people bring to the community. Now, we are going to other, the next grouping of, I have about five people that want to talk on 7.4, and I have Ms. Karen Nace. There you are. Do what? Uh, no, now. Yeah. We're all.
City council, mayor, thank you for having us. Supporters, thank you also. How many of you have ever been inside the depot? How many have ever picked up a book or looked at a family file?
Nope.
Do you even know what's housed there and what has grown over the last 41 years? I've lived here for 35. I've spent the last 30 volunteering, volunteering for the nonprofits, supporting history and preservation. I personally knew many of the people who protected the history that allowed Granberry to be known as where Texas history lives. Mary Lou Watkins, Lou Nutt, Mary Kate Durham, Pig Williams, and the list goes on. I also know Claiborne Arrington, who was the first original commissioner in 1866, through his descendants, having researched the family because they live in Sugar Land and can only come occasionally. I know Dan Cogdall through his descendants in Alaska, and his daughter Josephine and her family through research. I know Simon Hightower, who lived in the area called the Colony, from many of his descendants, who now live in Fort Worth, California, and other places. They came here to understand their heritage and have shared their information as we share ours. All because of research that has taken place over the years, using the records stored in the depot. 100% of the effort is done through donations and volunteer hours. We worked with TCU about the history of Adran, and I even had the pleasure of speaking to an auditorium of people that were there, of people about our cherished records that allowed them to have a better understanding of the 1870s here and the beginning of their university. It's now called TCU, for anybody that might have missed that.
Yeah.
Promoting Granberry and Hood County for their honoring of the history when they were too poor to change it. I know A.J. Cotton, a grocer on the square in the 1930s, through his descendants, who no longer live here. But they grew up here when times were much harder. The Cotton family home burned, and the friends and neighbors presented them with a friendship quilt, as was the custom. We found the Parkinson's family also had a cherished friendship quilt through contacts at the depot. The name of the Stringfellow Gil Martin house had an additional name added within the last year or so due to a grandson and hours of research done at the depot. T.B. Craddock was a station master at the depot twice. He owned the house for 32 years, as long as the Stringfellows, and longer than the Gil Martins. During World War I, he and his wife notified families of lost ones when they received the word "the depot." When he returned to the depot the second time, he was on school board. He served on the city council. He was even on the first parks board. It was all lost, as many before and after. When they move away or die, they are forgotten. The records at the depot are instrumental in preserving the loss of what these, of what these people have offered and sacrificed. We keep them alive for generations to experience.
Thank you.
I have more to offer, but...
Thank you, Ms. Nace. Now, I have Ms. Karen Call.
I'm short. I am not a native to Hood County. I came in 1996. Because I love history and people, I slowly became involved in Hood County history, eventually joining the Hood County Historical and Genealogical Society. I have mostly volunteered at the depot, but have also worked at the jail and the Yates-Duke cabin. I've led tours for the senior center, many public and private school groups, Leadership Granberry, other groups that come from out of town to visit our historical sites. Many of these times are not during our regular open hours, and many other volunteers, I and many other volunteers also work at the depot during posted hours on some days to help keep it open for locals and visiting individuals and groups. Other volunteers' tasks I do include organizing paper files, computer files, writing articles, doing research for locals, filling requests and local research from out-of-towners and out-of-state people. I've provided genealogy information to many locals. Most of these activities take place during the hours that are not posted. The new lease states that our premises will no longer include the parking lot. The new lease also states that additionally, public parking and the premises parking lot shall be provided by the sub lessor, the city, as a civic benefit during the non-business hours of the sub lessie. The problem with that is that the sub lessor seems to think that our only business hours are those that are posted on the door. Those are simply the hours we try to have a volunteer present for the public to come and visit. Our business hours include all hours of the day and sometimes at night. Our regular meetings are always in the evening. We are called volunteers because we come in at our convenience and the convenience of our customers. We try to accommodate anyone and everyone who wishes to use our services. That's why we are called volunteers. We have tried being accommodating, but found that didn't work at all. We ended up being parked out of our parking lot on days when we had posted hours. We could not open because our volunteers could not find one single parking spot in the parking lot or on the street. We have since spoken to the railroad, the actual owners of the property, and were told that under no circumstances was the parking lot to be used for anything but the depot, definitely not a city parking lot. I also was appalled by the new clause that states, "This sublease agreement shall inure to the benefit of and be binding on the heirs, successors, executors, administrators, and assignees of the parties." I have spoken to my heirs and successors, et cetera, and they have no intention of upholding any lease I put my name to, especially as a volunteer. Keeping in mind that the railroad, not the city, owns the depot and surrounding property and has expressly stated that it should not, under any circumstances, be a public parking lot, we are asking that we simply move forward maintaining the original lease. If, however, an agreement cannot be reached, we will be looking at the possibility of terminating our lease and removing all the historical records and finding new homes for the memorabilia, and then our history will be gone. Sadly, for years, the motto has been, "Where Texas history lives." Well, no more. Please say it ain't so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Call. Okay. Ms. Rhonda Bowman.
This comes from my heart. My husband and I chose to move to this town when we retired. We were looking for a place to live near Fort Worth because that's where the children and grandchildren are. So we chose Granberry. But one of the primary reasons we chose Granberry is because it had a sense of its own history. That meant a lot to us. We've lived in a lot of cities. We were corporate gypsies, and many of the cities that we lived in, we were surprised to find that a building would be torn down just because they wanted to build another building and didn't take into consideration the possibility of moving it or even the historical significance. And we saw that enough so that it seemed that it was all about what was happening in the city that day. But that wasn't the case when we saw Granberry. We were thrilled with the square. We were thrilled with the museums. I even started volunteering at the museums once we moved here and settled in. I don't understand. I don't understand the new lease as it is written. I think Karen called it a good job of describing what was in that lease, but I don't, I just cannot grasp why we, the history, a city that is, that finds its own history important, wants to restrict schoolchildren from getting into the museum to see the railroad museum or genealogical researchers or the women from the DAR who are coming in to digitize all of those old documents. I don't understand why we want to restrict that for want of a parking lot and a small parking lot. I have nothing else to say. I'm just confused. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Mr. Alan Mossberger.
Honorable mayor, esteemed city councilmen.
You may need to raise that mic so that...
Yeah. That'd be much better.
Thank you.
Businessmen, volunteers, I've been here off and on since about the start of our esteemed Fourth of July parade. And although not always able to be resident in this town, I've now been resident here for some little time. And I come today not knowing about everything that I want to speak because I haven't been able to examine the papers or hear the discussions about this. But I love Granberry because of its sense of history. It's known and is, cries out about its being the greatest small historical town in the United States, and that means a lot to me. I don't think that your intention is to harm that. And I really welcome this new Irish pub in our neighborhood. I like that kind of music. I haven't been able to go there. I find it interesting that they have a breakfast taco in addition to Irish stew, and I can't wait to try it. So I'm not trying to cast aspersions on them, but what I would urge you at this point is I think reasonable agreements can be made. And I think that this is preliminary to those reasonable negotiations occurring and a peaceable accommodation being made between all parties. And so I come before you this evening to urge you to table this motion, allow the parties and the government to sit together and arrive at a good agreement that does something that will further the benefit all of the citizens of this wonderful little burg. So I hope that you will take that into consideration. I think the city also might have something to offer into this solution. There are certain things that need to be done that could ensure the safety of the facility, the, you know, making sure that people don't wander into the train in a stupefied state, maybe paving the parking lot. So there are lots of possibilities to do something that is bigger, better, and more satisfying to all the parties in this, and I hope you will table the solution and allow those proper negotiations to take place so that a better solution can occur for all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, we only have one person at the mic to Brad Stevens. I have Brad Stevens and Sandra Goodwin. Brad? I'll call Sandra next. Are you both at the same address? Okay.
Good evening. It's great to see so many of my friends and neighbors, city council, Mayor Jarrett. We appreciate y'all's opportunity to give us a chance to speak tonight. I am fifth generation Hood County, raised by fourth generation. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight, otherwise I would have worn my formal flip-flops tonight. But I appreciate being given that opportunity. We are descendants of the A.J. Cotton family that Karen spoke about. We are very, very proud of our roots in Hood County, going back to the late 1800s. And I'm not here tonight to talk about my lineage or my legacy, but the lineage and legacy of Granberry, Texas, and how important it is to my family, raising the sixth generation currently on our family farm just outside of town. I'm an amateur historian, avocation archaeologist. Thanks to the depot, the Hood County Jail, they've helped us complete a lot of our family genealogy of where there were holes left in it. It's very important to us, to our family, to my descendants, that we preserve the history, not only of the depot, but of many other, of Granberry's historical buildings. And I implore any of the decision-makers here tonight to please respect and honor the tradition that has made Granberry what it is today and continue to pursue that into the future. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Ms. Goodwin. Goodwin.
Thank you again for allowing us all to speak, each of you. I, too, was not prepared to come up here, and I'm following my son, who did, I think, an excellent job of presenting our case. History is so important to this town, and it's always been known to me as a small, family-oriented, wonderful little community. I know it's a big area now. In fact, traffic out here is worse than what I drive in in the metroplex. And speaking with that, I live in Arlington. I come out here weekends to volunteer at one of the museums just to help because it is hard to get volunteers. But we, all of us that are volunteering, and I think all the people that are here tonight are interested in preserving all the history that we have, and we do need to keep that depot open. It has so many records, and so it's just such an important thing, much more important than a pub in my way of looking at things. And we do want to preserve all the history of Hood County, all the families that have gone before us and all the history and the things that have made this county great. And then I'm going to add one more thing, which I shouldn't, it's going to date me. I grew up here. I grew up here, and I think I marched in the 1965 Fourth of July parade. I'm just 99% sure that I did. So, even though I don't live here, I was raised here, born here, and spent a lot of time here, and still spend time, and hope to come back here soon.
Thank you. Ms. Godwin?
Ms. Walker, this is all I, I have, this is all that have come forth of us. Okay? All right. That is the public hearings. I don't have any more. All right. We'll move right to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine, previously discussed items and will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the city council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. Council, we've had time to review this. Do you, anyone have anything that they want to pull off of the consent agenda? I hear no one wanting to pull anything off. Do I hear a motion? Mr. Vale?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Your second?
Second.
Mr. Wadley, seconds. Mr. Vale made the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That will pass six and oh. Move to the deliberation agenda. We will go to seven point one. Council will receive an update report from Innovation Transportation Solutions pertaining to the Texas Department of Transportation Highway 377 project. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight we have with us staff from I T S, owner and staff, John Bolster and his compadre, Barry Hurd, and also our engineer, Craig.
Matt Craig.
Yeah.
Matt.
So anyway, we've got a little slideshow. We wanted to give you all an update. And thank y'all for being here, so you can see this too. This is important stuff, so go ahead, John, if you want.
So I'm in a kind of a pickle, so I'm going to do what I can. I'm just far enough away where I can't see that very well, and that's behind me, so I'm going to work off my phone a little bit.
How about that one?
Okay, I can do that one. So I won't be looking at you all the time. So I'm going to hit the button. Went the wrong way. Sorry. Here we go. All right. So the project team that we have working on this 377 job is Tech dot Department of Transportation is the lead. Their partnership was with the North Central Texas Council of Governments, which is a funding organization that funds transportation in the region. Obviously, the city of Granbury, it's the stakeholder of record for these projects. And then we work for Granbury to work through all of the Tech dot regulatory issues and to secure the, the funding for the project. And then half works for Tech dot. They're the engineer of record on, on this project. So we, and part of that role that we do for you guys is we attend to all of the meetings with Tech dot so that y'all don't have to. And we do all the coordination with them on the utilities, and we work for, both in the Dallas and Fort Worth district and other parts of the state. And so Barry Hurd's ex-Tech dot, we've got other ex-Tech dot folks working for us. So we have people on our staff that did this for a living until they retired or were stolen, one of the, one of the two, from Tech dot. And we help with the constructability of the project, the plan review, the traffic control. The phasing on the construction is always important to a project's success because, you know, if you get a project fully funded and you get to go get it built and you don't get it built right, it leaves a sad sour taste in people's mouths. So we help the contractor and the city work through those issues once we get to the construction phase of it. And utility coordination is a critical issue because you get the schematic approved, then you get the environmental clearance document done, then whatever right of way needs to be acquired, which we'll get to that in a second, and then the utilities have to be relocated. And the utilities typically have a long lead time because the state allows utilities in their right of way with the understanding that if the state widens the road, as we are doing in this case, those utilities have to move away from the future project. So they're, they either go back into the parkway areas of the project, and if there's no room, then they have to find easements outside the state's right of way. So that's always a critical issue that requires constant supervision. And then on all the right of way acquisition, whenever there's issues associated with that, we, we work with Tech dot on that because that's really the first time the residents get to have a firsthand relationship with this Tech dot is during right of way acquisition. And it's always, there's always some areas of smoothing off edges on that to make it a little bit easier. And then all of the agreements that are required between the, the city and the state and the C O G, we do all those things. And then, like I say, they don't hire us because we're smart. They hire us because we're pretty good at getting money for these projects. So today, what we've done is we, we were able to get this project included in the no local match requirement, 10% local match. That was a phased-in approach that the state did, and we got them to agree that this was one of those projects that would not require a local match. So that's a, that's a significant savings to, to Granbury for that project. And then we got, early on in the design, we worked with your staff, they identified the Heather Drive drainage issue was a, a problem, and there was a diversion that we needed to do for the project. And we'd had some similar experiences in Denton County on 377, ironically, and where we, the state agreed to pay for the, that diversion because it would, it benefited the adjacent area, and it was easier for the state to do it than anybody else. So we got them to agree to that diversion. That saved 2.5 million. And then again, we're working on the traffic control, and, and I think what you're going to hear soon is we are working on your aesthetics. There are stuff that you have to put into the plans early on to get those, those types of aesthetic infrastructure ready for the project, and I think Barry's been working with you guys on that. And what we do, we used to, we would really try to push landscaping as a part of the project, but we found out that contractors that are good with concrete aren't good with plants. So what we do is after the project is completed, we do a green ribbon grant work with y'all and Tech dot, and we come in after the project and have an actual landscape contractor do the work. So we're working on that even as we speak. Okay. So it's basically broken down into four projects. I can't see it, so I can't tell you where the limits are, but the main one we're working on is, is the breakout we're going to get to in a minute. And you'll see each one of those has what's called a C S J. And basically a C S J is called Control Section Job Number. It's just basically a social security number for a project. That's how they identify the job. And we are currently working on the breakout, we call it. And that, I think I can see. It's from Pirate Drive to Overstreet, and it includes, is it a spooey? Is that what we're doing? Yes, okay. DDI, that's right. Okay. Diverging Diamond intersection, and those are the limits of the project. It's $132 million. We've got $102 million of that so far, and we're looking at... There it is. I jumped ahead. We've got it cleared. We are working on the final plans, and right of way acquisition, we think will be done in spring of 2026. And then the utilities will take about, you know, about a year to do. And I know it sounds like we've been at this a long time, but I tell people all the time, we could get these roads built a lot faster if we could violate your property rights, not care about the environment, and not include the public. But if we have to do those things, there are a lot of hoops we have to jump through and a lot of people to make happy before we can get to actually cones going up. So it may seem like a long time, but remember, there's dog years, people years, and highway years. And this is pretty fast for highway years. So we're saying it's going to start 2027. We'll have the remaining 30 million earmarked for the project by then, and, because every August, I think they're fixing to approve the 25 Unified Transportation Plan in the next week or so. It's usually the end of August. They do that every year, and they update those projects every year. And you can go from year seven to year one in one cycle if you're ready to go. We are going to definitely be ready to go. So I think this is where I stop talking and the brains come up, right?
Thank you.
I'll be back.
All right. Appreciate you. I like your humor, too. Always good to have a little humor.
Okay. I'm going to start off with the next slide with the purpose and need, the environmental that John was talking about. And just to give you a little bit of background, at I T S, it's one thing we do is work on unique projects, and this is a unique project. And I think as you go, we go on to the end of the presentation, everybody's going to see that. It's not a project that you see every day. So the need, everyone knows the need. There's inadequate capacity to meet the current projected traffic demands. As far as the purpose, it's improve mobility and enhance safety. That's one of our major goals that we were talking about earlier. The, I'm going to drop back and cover the whole corridor and then focus in on the breakout project that's currently, has just been submitted for 95% P S and E to Tech dot. That's for the plans. The existing highway is four lane highway, 12-foot travel lanes, medians vary throughout the corridor. It's a combination of a suburban and rural roadway that's been upgraded over time, as you know, by Tech dot. Existing roadway from Holmes Drive to the east end of the bridge over the Brazos River is four lanes and has a depressed median. From the east end of the bridge to Whitehead Drive has a raised median. Go one more here. Another part of the existing roadway from east of Whitehead Drive to FM 167 or Fall Creek Highway has the two-way left turn lane. The proposed roadway, oh, that was one farther. Sorry about that. So on the proposed roadway, which is why we're here, ultimately, it's going to be six lanes, three lanes in each direction, and a divided urban highway, urban design, which is, is different than, than what's out there currently. Between FM 51 and Holmes Drive, we're made a four lane and converted to a rural, to an urban highway. And we also have improvements at intersections, interchanges, ramps, driveway connections, providing pedestrian, bicycle, and pedestrian accommodations. Overall, the project objectives are improve the interchange at 144, which is the breakout project, add additional three lanes in each direction to add to capacity, like we just talked about, going to six lanes, improve the interchanges north and south, address drainage issues along the corridor that we'll, we'll cover in a few moments, mention the best pedestrian and bicycle accommodations, and to accommodate COG's Mobility 2050 Plan. So this is a very unique interchange, and John had mentioned the spooey and the direct diverging diamond. This, this is, in my opinion, a better design than the spooey, the single point urban interchange. I worked on a couple of those in Collin County, and this design improves the U-turns much better than that design. So this is a very unique interchange. On the next slide, the, these Q R codes go back to the, the public meetings and hearings that we've had, Tech dot has had recently, and we included those. As far as the right of way status on the breakout project, there's currently 18 parcels for acquisition. Nine of those parcels are in negotiation. Six have been PUAs or possession and use agreements, which means Tech dot has possession of those parcels, and three parcels are in appraisals. So we're one-third of the way through with the right of way. Utility relocations, people are currently out there, city of Granbury, AT&T, Atmos Spectrum, Windstream, Windstream, and Zayo. Right now, the utilities are in the design phase, and some of them are close to being done with design, some of them are midway, but there's really nobody that's at the beginning. So we're working with Tech dot and Matt's team to identify the places where people can go along the corridor. Drainage improvements. There's drainage improvements throughout the corridor. The main thing is, on the improvements, there's going to be a urban storm sewer system incorporated in the project, that there's no more open ditches throughout. There'll be a few minor places, but for the most part, everything's going to be enclosed system. This is what John had mentioned earlier on the Heather Drive. You can see at the bottom of the slide, I remember a few years ago when there was flooding. That's taken, you know, coming, just looking down onto Heather Drive, and the whole area is flooded. So that will be solved with a, that drainage diversion where that won't, the culvert that's shown in the top picture will be eliminated and the water will be diverted to the lake. So I'm going to turn this over to Matt to finish the aesthetics.
Very good. She had to click her there. All right. Thank you again. And I've had that privilege of being the project manager on this and really working with the city closely on all the advanced planning, the things that John said we had to watch out for, right? The environment and the right of way. And one of the last things that we had is the aesthetic side, and looked at the overall plan for the area. And if you've remodeled your kitchen before, you know all the different choices of the countertop and the flooring and the all, the issues that go into that. And it's really been a, a great working with the city. Appreciate Chris and Joanne as well, and, and working through the issues with Tech dot, with I T S, and coming up with a, an aesthetic plan that'll, sets the groundwork for the rest of the, the improvements on, on 377. So this just, I'm going to run through just a few slides, give you a sampling of some of what those aesthetics look like coming out, because the breakout project is what we're doing aesthetics on right now. The construction plans have actually 90% been developed now, and they just got turned into Tech dot. So the timing's perfect on working through, you know, what's getting incorporated, construction plans, and working with you all on the plans here. So there's, like I say, three big bridges coming across. The new bridge is across the lake, and you've got the new bridge for FM 51 Paloxi, you know, shown in this picture, and the new bridge for, as Barry and John were mentioning, the, the diverging diamond, that's going to be in place there for a 144 replacement. So, and that's a big bridge, a lot of concrete to it, and the aesthetics are an example of what is being provided in the overall construction plans. Also, on the hardscape side of things, when we say hardscape, as John mentioned, the landscaping, the plants and all will be later. This is the hardscape. This is the concrete part that goes into it. It's the look of the retaining walls, of the bridge rails, the retaining walls, the, all the way down to the stamped concrete for, for walkways and crossings. It also includes the lighting standards from the streetlights and the, the overhead lights as well, and also the accent lighting that goes into it. So I'm really proud of what the architects and working with the city and coming up, and Tech dot, and coming up with the plan for what is getting built into the initial breakout And this gives you a little more composite of just what it would look at, look like with all the different elements there. So that's within your, I believe, within your briefing package. As you'll see, and there'll be, the next step is working through the, the overall agreement with Tech dot on those aesthetic elements that go into, into the plan. So I know those are being worked on now. And last is accents as well, I call them gateway monuments that will bear, really set the presence for people coming into town, especially coming up from 144 and over the lake. So with that, to close it out, John?
Hey, could I, could I get you to go back to the slide with the... Hey, could I get you to go back to the slide with the sidewalls on the bridge? I wanted to share this with y'all prior, but I didn't do it. That metal, that metal, keep going. We'll go to that slide in a minute, but that metal barrier, one more, I think. There you go. On the bottom left, there's a metal barrier there, and that doesn't look very appealing, but I did go over and notice that on the chism trail, and it's painted and it looks very attractive. And that rail is what we had in mind along the interior of the road crossings of the bridge. The one at the very top on the right is what we had in mind for the aesthetics between the lake or the river and the bridge with the lighting on it. And then there's about a 10-foot walk space there, or bicycle trail and walk space, and it has to have another barrier. And we were looking at this one with kind of a cathedral cutout on it, but I think we could go to the standard TechDOT if we would paint it for that interior rail on that as well. I don't know, what are your thoughts, folks? It would save us some money, but anyway.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
Just a question, Mayor. What's the maintenance after you paint that? Is that something we're going to have to?
Yeah, we'll be responsible to paint that probably every 15 years or so.
Okay.
And the concrete was the other option. It's got to be able to stop the traffic. And so I think, you know, the long-term maintenance of the pipe rail would look, we still have the pretty aesthetic on the exterior of the bridge with the lighting that will illuminate the sidewalks and part of the roadway. Anyway, that's just something that I thought we needed to consider some more as we move forward. And then if you go to the next slide where we were talking about the stamped concrete, oops.
No way.
One more.
The other way. One more.
There you go. That's not necessarily the pattern that we chose, but they're using that for illustrative purposes to let you know that it's a stamped concrete product there. And it shows you the walk space and the ADA compliance and all that kind of thing. So the details are still, to get an actual picture or rendition of what we've designed, they're working on that too. But you can see the wall underneath the bridge, that's a painted surface. The standard is a raw concrete, and so we've been working on that to beautify it. This is our gateway to our community, so we thought we needed to present it in the light of high quality and long-lasting aesthetics. The black poles were also chosen by the design team and staff, and you can see, we very carefully made sure we had a historic-looking light, and we want to maintain that historic look. So we feel like the black poles would look better than the galvanized or the galaloon poles, but there's a cost difference for that, and we've got that, and we've talked about that already in the past. So anyway, I just wanted to highlight that for the folks in the audience and also what we're talking about on that rail. So thank you.
I appreciate that, Chris.
So I get to do the last part. The reason why we have to hit our mark is because if you look at the cost matrix here, since April of 2022, just in this short two-year period, the TechDOT's Highway Construction Index has gone up 65%. So right now, it's 132, and we need to hit our marks on the right-of-way, the utility relocation, because the longer this project rolls, the more that's going to impact us. So that's why when we come alongside you and we know how to run the things concurrently, the reason we do it is because typically we're facing something like that. And one other point, if you want to know what a divergent diamond is and you need some furniture, go over to the Collin Nebraska Furniture, and that, Nebraska Furniture Way over the toll road, that's a divergent diamond. So if you want to practice before you get it, you can go over there.
I loved it.
I think that's it, right?
Well, John, let me just say this. We appreciate you taking us on as a client. I know you typically work with bigger cities and bigger projects. I know you've got five projects going on in Denton right now that are hundreds of millions of dollars, maybe billions.
Billion and a half.
And we really appreciate you taking the time and expertise to come to our small community and helping us with this, and we feel blessed to be able to partner with you and have you on our team.
Every time I come here, I tell you, I feel like I'm coming on vacation. Well, not so much this afternoon, but today, it was beautiful. I love this place.
Do y'all have any questions?
It's my pleasure.
I just, the timeline you showed, where it starts in 2027 and finishes 2031, that's just for that one portion?
Correct, but we are working on, we are working with TechDOT to channel those other three CSJs to feather them in as well. So the problem we're having is, is right now, TechDOT cut all of their develop authority budgets throughout the districts, and I've got certain projects in other areas where they were buying right-of-way on projects, and they just stopped buying the right-of-way because they don't, they had to move that money into construction. So we've got to get through this one, 2025 UTP starts in September 1st. We'll start working on the 2026, you know, in October, and our intent is to continue to delegate those dollars to those projects through that unified process as they come online. But right now, we're fighting the fact that they, they're running out of develop authority. And what that means is, Matt, right? They go hire consultants to do the work because they don't do it in-house. And when that budget gets cut, they have to throttle back. So we're working through the details, but yes, we are after those other three CSJs currently.
But those will be outside that four-year period?
Correct. And I will tell you, as somebody who's building $200 million breakout in Lewisville, another $50 million breakout in Lewisville, and then a $1.5 billion breakout in Denton on one project on I-35, you want to stage them out because otherwise you break your entire community. But we are working them concurrently.
You know, I might just add that early on, we had a conversation with John and Michael Morris, the executive director of the MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization through the council of government, and he encouraged us to keep working in these segments, get this first one funded. Meanwhile, keep moving forward with the design and engineer, talking to TechDOT as well and that, and of course, Matt Craig and his team with Half and Associates are working on that. And so it's not just a one-and-done, and then we take another deep breath and start again. It's going to be a continual engineering project over the next decade. And as we get more of it ready, shovel-ready, and our community can handle it, then they'll move forward to let the bids and get more done.
Add to that, when, you know, Michael makes a commitment, he sticks to it. But to add benefit to that, even the state of Texas has now done a statewide 377 corridor committee that's looking at 377 through the entire state. So that means the commission is taking an interest in, in these projects as well.
John, thank you. We, you know, have conversations with other people and they, when they find out that John Holster's involved, we get a good look, and they say, ah, you got somebody doing the heavy, heavy lifting, so thank you very much.
I think somebody told my wife that.
She's working pretty hard, too.
Thank you.
Keeping you in line.
Barry?
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Oedley.
We had a public meeting last August. TechDOT did a thing at our conference center the week before. They met us back in executive session. And at that time, the construction was going to begin in '26 on the breakout project and finish in '29, because I remember questioning the three-year timeframe. Four years seems at least more reasonable, and maybe longer than that. But this slip in a year and then to start, is that more firm now, or is that still going to be pretty flexible?
Now that we are buying right-of-way, the state's buying the right-of-way, and the utilities have been on notice, we, that schedule, once TechDOT sets a let date like this, once the right-of-way begins and the utility starts, they don't move it. They'll bring more assets to bear on it. They don't move the let date.
Awesome.
They can move it up, they can't move it out.
That's, well, because even slipping a year to me is better than saying, here's the date, and then five years later, you're still haven't started.
So what happens is, again, I kind of alluded to it, you only know what, we don't really, until you get to 60% plans on the project, you really don't know how your utilities in the corridor are impacted. So the closer we get to 95%, the more certain we are of our schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone? Mr. Rodriguez?
Well, John, I hope you stay on this project from start to finish. With the political climate and the change out of city council members, mayors, none of us are going to be here until, for, I don't know how many of us are going to be here to see the finish of the entire corridor. And that's, no, I'm just saying, I don't know if you're going to be here for 15, 20 years for it to take that long for the entire corridor. So I am, I'm happy, and hopefully you stay on this, and hopefully you stay alive to finish this project. All right?
Yes, sir.
So we're counting on you to do all the heavy lifting.
I'm trying to stay alive.
All right, all right, thank you.
I do have projects that I started when I was single and young and skinny and handsome, and now I've got three kids all out of college, and I've been married 32 years, so I'm still working on them.
Congratulations. Thank you, John. And Barry? Barry? Thank you, guys. And Matt, certainly Matt. All right. We will move now to 7.2. Consider all matters incident and related to requesting financial assistance from the Texas Water Development Board, including the adoption of Resolution Number 24-08, authorizing the filing of an application for assistance and making certain findings in connection therewith. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, we've been working on this grant with the Water Development Board. I sent y'all a pretty thick email on it a while back, but in order to apply, in order to apply for these funds on the deadline of September 3rd, there's some administration needs to take place, and that is the approval of this resolution. And so basically what it does is establish that we're going to apply for the money that's available, it's about $60 million. Somewhere south of that, we'll end up with an award, we hope. To date, we are the only approved applicant for this funding, and so we're excited about the opportunity to receive this funding assistance for the additional water treatment plant for, that's in our comprehensive capital improvement plan. As you well know, our water capacity is 5 million gallons a day at the D-SAL plant, and the need as we continue to grow is going to increase, and we plan that within the next 10 years. I will just tell the audience tonight that there was a chemical that was released by the EPA, discovered to be cancer-causing, and so if there's four parts per billion in water, you have to remove it. And so our reverse osmosis treatment plant removes that chemical. And in the meantime, there was a huge lawsuit settlement between the federal government and several of the big chemical companies like DuPont, Monsanto, I'm not sure all the brand names, but there were literally billions and billions of dollars given to the government to roll out in these grant funds throughout the states to help remediate that chemical that never goes away. And so we've, we're the only organization in the state of Texas that did the paperwork to apply for those funds. Is that incredible? Out of all cities, our city did it. So hats off to our guys.
I did that, yes.
And now then, in order to apply, you have to pre-apply, and we were the only one that did that. Now we've been approved to submit the application. So the paperwork for that is this resolution, and of course, I wholeheartedly recommend you approve the authorization of the folks to do the job that's inside the resolution, and we will get those papers signed in to our engineering firm tomorrow if you so approve the resolution. Thank you.
Hey, Chris, who brought this to your attention?
Mr. Keith Kendall with M-Pro-Tech, Hibbs &amp; Todd. If you'd like to, I didn't see you out there, I was looking for you, but you were sitting there instead of where you normally sit, so is there anything you'd like to add? Is there anything you'd like to add to what we've said?
Chris, you covered it very well. There's nothing more I would like to add. Just as Chris said, we'll turn this in September 3rd timeline. Probably won't hear anything until January, February of 2025, based on, one of them, board staff is pretty shorthanded, so they're reviewing a lot of applications, but as Chris mentioned, we were the only one within it. So we're really excited about the opportunity, glad we had the foresight to put that in with the staff when those opportunities came available, and we're really excited to see if we could make the CIP project for this North Planet reality.
Well, I want to toot your horn a little bit. Keith called me and said, there's this grant funding available, is very interested, and of course, he'd seen our, his engineering firm does our capital improvement plan for what we're doing. He'd seen that plan and helped develop it, and so his presence every month at the Water Development Board makes them aware of what's going on and the opportunities that are out there for us. So thank you for being our bird dog and taking care of us and bringing home the quail here.
Absolutely, you're very welcome on that, and you know, just, one of them aboard has been good to the City of Granbury with the two water treatment plant expansions and the wastewater treatment plants. I believe y'all saved over $35 million in financing costs with the subsidized interest rates and some of the grant funds we've been able to obtain. So it's been a great vehicle for the City of Granbury to continue to build infrastructure within it, and we're looking forward to this one coming to fruition as well.
You bet. And also, they kind of encouraged us on our phone call when we were doing the pre-application meeting, Zoom meeting, they told us that we may be able to apply for additional debt relief type funds moving forward to cover the delta that we need to finish this project besides the grant money. So that would be, that would translate to less bonds being issued to do this project.
I was hesitant to mention that. I had that conversation as a follow-up with Marvin Colchane, that's over the SRF program for drinking water and clean water. And one of the questions I had was, what is kind of the holdup of moving forward? And he says, well, we got the opportunity for additional grant funds for this program. It's like, I'll say no more, let me get out of your way.
It is, sir. It's very exciting, thank you.
It is.
Keith, thank you. By the way, it takes two sides on that, so Keith was bringing that there was somebody that was receptive. Thank you, Mr. Kaufman, and thanks the staff for, you know, doing the work that looks way into the future. Thank you. So we have a motion to approve this resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make that motion, I'd make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 24-08, authorizing the filing of an application for assistance and making certain findings in connection therewith.
I second.
Mr. Rodriguez seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hear no nays, that's passing 6-0. Great. Okay. Move to 7.3, discuss and consider adopting Resolution Number 24-09 to disapprove the proposed budget from the Hood Central Appraisal District and request the refunding of monies paid for unapproved ventures such as may be identified in a forensic audit of the five prior, or the prior five years of HCAT expenses. This is my agenda item, so I don't get to call on Mr. Kaufman to work through this. But I will say, and Mr. Law, you are welcome to sit there, you're welcome to come to the stand any way that you want here. Mr. Law, and I did meet Monday, and we've met, we've met before. We walked through the 2023 audit. There were some questions that I had about the audit, and there were some questions that Mr. Law had about the audit. So we're still working through that, but I would say, all in total, it's a pretty favorable initiative that's going on there. We did walk away with, you know, an understanding, an agreement on quite a few things, but we also walked away with, with a, you know, we'll agree to disagree on that. So I'd like to discuss that, can I get that slide up, the bar chart? Are the, yeah, that one right there. I want to start, I want to start with this bar chart because this does detail what's happened over the past five years. But I also want to go through some information that I pulled together, and Mr. Law, I can now say to you that this, where you ask where, this is in the FAQ, Ask Facts, Frequently Asked Questions section of the Texas Tax Code. Some of the questions that we had earlier were about, what is a? Some of the questions that we had earlier were about, what is a primary government? And I'm, I'm going to spend a little time on that, because it gets to where we are as a, uh, the fiduciary standpoint from a city, from the city government, the county, the school board as taxing entities. Okay, the state of Texas, in the state of Texas, a primary government is typically defined as a government entity that is separately elected governing body and is legally separate and fiscally independent. And this includes state government, it also includes local governments, entities such as county, cities and towns that have their own elected officials and administrative structures. The, uh, Texas, uh, then asked the next question is, the Texas appraisal district considered to be a primary government? And the response is, a Texas appraisal district is generally not considered a primary government. Instead, it is classified as a component unit of the, uh, primary government. And then they give a bunch of, uh, uh, different, uh, uh, what do they call them? Explanations as to what that is. But the finance, the fiscal dependence, appraisal districts are fiscally dependent on the taxing units they serve. As they do not have the authority to levy taxes on their own, instead, they are funded through contributions from these taxing entities. And I will go back to the bar chart here and say, look at the, the adopted number, the second line there, that adopted number is funding from all of the taxing entities. This is the money that is operating the appraisal district. This is, uh, your and my, uh, taxing or tax dollars. See, uh, they go further to say that the appraisal districts are physically dependent, let's see, yeah, they're physically dependent, they are funded through contributions from taxing units. Legal status is that appraisal districts operate under the jurisdiction of the Texas Property Tax Code and created by state legislation, making them distinct from independent entities like cities or counties that have broader governing authority and fiscal, uh, independence. The component units, uh, that they described as the appraisal district, component units are legally separate entities for which the elected officials of the primary government are financially accountable. They can include organizations like appraisal districts, housing authorities, and certain types of special districts. And then they conclude with, therefore, while Texas appraisal districts play a crucial role in property tax administration, they are not considered primary governments due to their limited scope of authority, lack of official independence and governance structure. Instead, they function as component units within the broader frame, framework of local entities. So the question that we have on the budget is not so much what's, you know, in the budget, but it's what's happened over the past five years. And you will see that top line is the adopted number, and then there's an audited final budget. When you go to the audit, there is a final budget. The budget can be amended by amendment during the course of the year, but the amendments are to be submitted to the taxing entities, and they can be approved, not approved, or, you know, ignored, but they have to be out there thirty days ahead of time for approval. The actual expense, uh, is also from the audited, uh, the twenty, all of the audits from eighteen through twenty-three. The approved expense is anything that would be under budget, if you will. And so those items that were over budget certainly were not approved. Now, during this eighteen, uh, eighteen, uh, we'll, and we'll get to the non-approved expense in just a few minutes, but I think you can go to the second chart now. During this eighteen month period, or eighteen, or tw- five-year period, over two million eight hundred thousand dollars were excess funds. And I want to talk about, a little bit about the, uh, FAQ on the funds and fund balance, they went into a fund balance. Says the Texas Property Tax Code does not explicitly provide a detailed set of regulations specifically governing fund balances or appraisal districts. However, the code does include several relevant provisions regarding the budgeting, financial management, and accountability of appraisal districts, which indirectly influence how fund balances are managed. And then they go into the key sections, six one oh six, six one, six, 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 two. But they talk about the management of surplus funds. While the code does not explicitly use the term fund balances, the management of surplus funds is addressed, section six oh six J. And it states, if the appraisal district ends the fiscal year with a surplus, it must credit each taxing unit that participates in the district its proportionate share of the surplus. The credit is typically applied to reduce the contributions required from the taxing units in the following year. Now I'm going to add, because this is where, uh, uh, Mr. Law and I, well, I'm sure I have continued conversation, but it, it says that you will, you must credit each taxing unit, and it then says to the, to the degree that it is not a committed or obligated fund, or it's not been committed or obligated, uh, that wasn't included here. But they also comment that surplus funds at the end of the fiscal year must be returned to the contributing taxing units in proportion. This process helps ensure that the appraisal districts do not accumulate excessive fund balances and remain accountable to the taxing units. And that's, uh, the, uh, crux of, you know, what we're coming to right here. But it finishes out with, the overarching legal framework in Texas recognizes the authority of the appraisal district board of directors to manage the district's operations, including proposing budgets. However, the taxing entities which fund the district and may disapprove the budget will yield, wield significant control, which could arguably, arguably position them as holding the ultimate decision-making authority, at least in financial matters. And that brings us to the budget today that we, that we have talked about. With the appraisal district, uh, and by the way, all of these years, you came in, uh, late twenty twenty-three, correct?
September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, yes.
Late twenty-three. So all of this has occurred before, uh, uh, Mr. Law arrived. But there were excess funds of two million eight hundred and seven thousand dollars. And in late twenty twenty-three, uh, there was a refund, refund to the entities of one million nine. That leaves about almost a million dollars. And that graph before this shows where that money went. And this graph that's in front of you here shows how it got to the position of where it could be utilized. And that's two million eight hundred and forty-five thousand that wound up, uh, uh, being retained to apply to retirement, retained to apply to retirement, and retained fund balances for a building fund. The twenty twenty-two audit that was completed by one firm, this year, a new firm came in, and they had a, uh, uh, significant restatement of the twenty twenty-two to the twenty twenty-three audits. The numbers don't change, but the numbers now show exactly where the two bit, two point, uh, or two million eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars did go. A million nine came back to the entities, which, which we, we know. About seven hundred thousand, over and above, and un, unbudgeted and unapproved, went into the, uh, unapproved by the entities, approved by the board, but unapproved by the entities, went into the, um, uh, retirement fund to bring up the retirement fund from people from, uh, or to bring them up to, uh, the level that they were supposed to be, they exchanged retirement funds and they had to buy their way in. Four hundred thousand is out there for a building, for the new appraisal district building, that was, is, uh, a fees for architecture, fees, uh, surveys, et cetera, et cetera. Those fees, uh, you know, have been, those have been expended. So there's a million dollars there that's been expended, uh, with, uh, a board approval, but not, uh, presented to the entities for entities approval. And in these instances, too, most of these instances, and, uh, Mr. Law, if I, uh, if I misstate, I'm, you know, I'm happy to have those conversations with you again, but with the entities, they were not, again, they were not, they were unapproved. So if you could go back to the, uh, bar chart, can you back that up, please? The bar chart. Here we, oops, there. So what you'll notice on the, on this is that the enti, the taxing, the appraisal district comes to us every year and says, we need about X amount of money. And we, as the entities, now city, school, everybody, comes together and says, all right, they say, well, yes, yes, our, Jesus, no, we, we think that you might leave, need less. And you can see the adopted budget, which is the second light blue line, sometimes it's quite a bit less, sometimes it's a little bit less, but it's generally, it's a little bit less. They ask for X and they get X minus, uh, because, uh, you know, the entities review it and say, okay, we need, you know, we, we don't see that, we, we don't believe that you need, we don't believe that our taxpayers think that this is something that should be paid for, so let's take the budget, budget down. And the, the, uh, appraisal district always has the option of coming back to the entities down the road, if they start running short of cash or running short of needs or something drastic happens that they need more than money, they always have the chance to come back and ask the entities for more. Raise, raise the, uh, uh, we need to raise more money through our entities. Again, we write the check, the entities write the check to put this money out there. You can see last year, in twenty twenty-four, they asked for three point two, and it was two point eight is what was, uh, actually adopted, about five hundred thousand less. But when you go down to the actual expense and look at what was approved over the last five years, it's about two and a half million dollars. And that is probably where we're going to, I can't say, Mr. Law, would have to say, where we're going to probably end up later this year. But with the three million seventy-five thousand, I look at that and say, hey, uh, I'm not interested in continuing to, to, uh, place money into the appraisal district that may not be spent on the items that, uh, we were, uh, we thought that they would be spent on. The, you know, I, I'm, I'm not interested in doing that. I'm saying we should reduce the budget by about a half a million dollars, and if November of next year, you need additional funds to run the appraisal district. Then you come back to the entities and ask for the funds versus the, uh, uh, moving it into a, uh, an account, a committed fund that we wouldn't have any say over, the board does. And, you know, we trust the board to do a good job. But the entities have the fiscal responsibility of that budget, and that money coming to you, you present your budget, which is, if you guys have not seen the budget that the H-CAD did, they've done a very good job of laying out what they need. There may be some objections on the number of personnel, which drives some of that, uh, you know, five hundred thousand dollar increase that they're looking for this coming year. But the fifth, we, we have, as the city council, the responsibility to our taxpaying citizens to be fiduciary responsibility for purchasing the services that the appraisal district provides. And they give us a menu, we choose off the menu, and this is what we want. And at the end of the year, I'm expecting that, you know, we, we got what we wanted, and that that budget would be just about even at the end of the year. It has not been over the past five years, and the funds that have not been, have been, um, uh, moved into the fund balance, uh, with the exception of the one point nine, which we had to go and, and ask for again and again and again, have not been returned to the, uh, entities as per the, as per the, uh, tax code. So that's my recommendation, and I'm interested in hint, Mr. Wadley. And Mr. Law, if, Mr. Law, are you comfortable with questions as well?
Absolutely, and, uh, obviously I was respecting your, your statements and didn't want to interrupt you, but I definitely have several things to, uh, speak to that you mentioned.
Do you mind, we have the questions and then see if you.
Whichever, whichever you prefer, sir.
Okay, great. Mr. Wadley?
My question, my first question, uh, the one I have now, the adopted budget is what the entities agree on, is that correct?
No, sir.
The, the light blue line?
I think there, I think there is.
And the actual expense is what is actually spent. And, and every year, the actual expense is less than the budget, which is good. I mean, that means that there's, you know, you didn't spend everything that was allotted. How it, I don't, what is the audited final budget, the purple line? And in twenty-two, how is that so much higher than, uh, like, if the adopted budget, the light blue line, is what the entities say, this is what you can have, who says, who does the audited final budget?
Yes, that, that's a good question, and it's one I absolutely want to address. The one thing I want to start off by saying, though, is that the, the appraisal district, the Hood Central Appraisal District and all other two hundred and fifty-three appraisal districts in the state of Texas are by state law listed as, as a political subdivision of the state. We, we are our own independent body. We have a board of directors, just like the city has a city council, and it's actually the board of directors that determine the needs of the appraisal district through the process of proposing a budget, having a public, a budget, a public hearing for the public to attend, anyone can attend, but the public may attend. And then they adopt, they adopt a budget. Then that budget is required to be sent to the taxing entities. It's not sent to the taxing entities necessarily for their approval. In fact, the tax code only says that we send it to the taxing units, and if the taxing units choose, they can disapprove that budget. So we're not, we don't send the budget, it's not that we're, that we ever send our budget to the entities and say, is this okay with you guys? It's really, my, my board of directors has the governance of the appraisal district, and they determine a budget and a need, then they, they adopt it and they send it out, and then you all have the ability to disapprove. And that's what's on your agenda tonight, to disapprove that budget. Now, if a majority of the taxing entities disapprove the budget, then the law says the budget's disapproved, and the board of directors has to go back to the drawing board and they start over. But if a majority don't disapprove it, it's approved, it stands approved by that. Now, you ask another question with regards to the chart that's on your screen right now. When the board of directors has, has an approved budget, that's one that they've approved, and then we start operating in, yes, there are times in which we may have less expenses than what we budgeted for. There's a couple of areas that we always run up against that it's, it's tough to, uh, estimate. One is, how much litigation are we going to have? How much litigation should we plan for, and how much, which we budget for? The other is appraisal review board fees, how many ARB, how many ARB protests are we going to have? We don't know. So those are, those are areas in which we have to estimate, and, and a lot of times we get it right, or a lot of times, uh, we come, we come in short, where we didn't have to expend as much money as we had. Another area that's a challenge is a lot of times having to do with personnel. Seventy-five percent of our budget is personnel-related. We, we are a service industry, we're not making products, we're not, we're not building anything, we're there to serve the people. And so the largest part of my budget is personnel. And that is also an area where if, if someone decides to leave our employment, it may take a month, two months, three months, six months to rehire someone, so there's always savings that are, uh, earned there. Now, what, what that, looks kind of like a purple line from here. What that purple line, for example, in two thousand two, or I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-two, where's two thousand two? Two thousand twenty-two represents is, originally the budget was two point eight, say, two point eight eight million dollars. I think it's actually written here. Yeah, two, two million eight, eight eighty-three. And it says the final budget was three million eight twenty. You would have to look at the twenty twenty-two audit that the auditors prepared. Now, you got to go back and get a little bit, bit of history here. At some point in time, in two thousand sixteen, and I'd be more than happy to go into as much detail as you want with regards to the retirement decisions that were made in two thousand sixteen, and then the decision approximately in twenty twenty-one, that the appraisal district started looking into the, the possibility of building a building. Well, what, what the board of directors of the appraisal district did during those times is when we had excess proceeds, the law provides, as just as the mayor has said, that we have to refund excess proceeds, unless they, they have been spent or if they've been obligated. Now, the mayor had, and I have had some wonderful conversations, he, he spoke correctly, there are some areas in which we've agreed to disagree on, respectfully, I will say, we, we've had, we got a good relationship. But I, I've been a chief appraiser for twenty-five years, and for the last fifteen years, I was a appraiser, a chief appraiser at the Tarrant Appraisal District. I have sat under four different. District. I have sat under four different auditors, and I have sat under three different law firms that have advised me along the way. And they have all advised me from a standpoint that when an appraisal district, when the appraisal district board of directors comes up to the end of the year and they make some decisions, is there anything that we need to do? And they can obligate funds. I have an attorney general's opinion, if you would like, I would love to read parts of it. I won't, I won't if you don't want me to. But the attorney general actually weighed on, weighed in on this option as well. Now, back to the history. In 2016, the board of directors made a decision to enter into an agreement, that might be the way to say it, with the Texas counties and districts retirement system, to put the employees under the TC DRS retirement system, same system that the county has. But they also made a decision to, to do a prior service credit, which mainly meant that some of the employees, or all the employees that were there, that they would go back and they would get prior year service credit for that. Well, in doing so, TC DRS said, you're going to have to put in additional funds that weren't contributed back in those days. So the board of directors took some steps in which to take those excess proceeds and actually commit them to that retirement plan. Now, I did provide you all a handout. And if you would look at your tab, I think it's 2, 2A, section 2A, the comment was made that some of these items were unapproved. And, and that's not entirely the case. What I have provided to you under item 2A is literally the board of directors' meeting minutes for 2018, 19, 20, 21, and I think I went all the way to 2023. And for example, if you'll look at that, that first meeting minutes of May 18th, May 10th, 2018, it says, a motion was made by Terry Johnson to retain 2017 fiscal year excess proceeds in the amount of 213,000 to pay the TC DRS retirement plan. Motion was seconded and it passed. So the board of directors put this item on an agenda, on a public agenda, held a public meeting, took a public vote, and, and what my lawyers would tell me was they obligated those funds. When they obligated those funds, those funds no longer became excess proceeds. Okay? If you'll also flip over to the next page where it says the 2018 budget, in 2018, the appraisal district board of directors, now keep in mind, as the mayor's already pointed out, I wasn't here during this time. But this happened, this happened back in 2018. On, on the, the adopted 2018 budget, if you look under the count number 6050 and 6051, there's a line item entitled retirement and a budgeted item of $96,200. But then right below that, there's a prior service credit line item on the budget as well, in the amount of $300,000. Now, that was approved by the board of directors. Once this budget was approved, it was submitted to all the taxing entities, and the taxing entities had a right under section 6.10 to disapprove this item if they chose to. Actually, they would, they would approve it, disapprove it in their different section. That 6.1 is a different type of disapproval. But at no, at no point in time was the 2018 budget disapproved by the entities. So there was a, at this time, there was a $300,000 line item that was put in the budget, approved by the board of directors, not disapproved by the taxing entities, which is subsequently an approval. And that money, the monies there went to the TC DRS program. If you'll also look down, and I'm just going to jump ahead, because the next issue that came up is in 2020, I guess 2020 to 2021, the board of directors made a decision that they wanted to look into the possibilities of building a new building. And that process started happening. Now, the mayor and I agree on one thing, and that is, is that the appraisal district, over that period of time, did not go out and get the proper approval that they needed to build a building. Of course, the appraisal district didn't build any building. That process never happened. But we both agree that there's a specific process within the code of how that approval must come about. And we agree that that didn't happen. Okay? However, the board of directors made a decision back in those days to start taking some of this excess proceeds and committing it to a capital, capital outlay, building, landing, build, building and land fund. In essence, what they were basically trying to do, I believe, was set aside some excess proceeds rather than refund them and start saving some money towards a building. So in the event that we did go through the process, got the approval, we would have a down payment, a large portion of the, the property paid for, and it would be less monies that we would have to borrow. Now, I believe, I wasn't there, but I believe that was their intentions and goals. But what I also want to point to, if you'll flip over to like the 2019 minutes, you'll see another motion made in a public meeting, where the motion was made by Terry Johnson to retain 2018 fiscal year in funds, 173,000 to go to the retirement expense. And in that, if you flip on over a couple more, I mean, I, I won't read all of these to you, but there's, there's action items within the minutes of the board of directors' meetings to where these, these decisions were not being made outside of the public light. They were being made in the public light. If you'll flip over a few pages, you'll come across to like the, let me see which one, go like to the 2020 adopted budget. I don't have page numbers, I'm sorry, but it's still in that same section. I'll give you just a second to find that. But under our, our 2020 adopted budget, you're going to find in that same category, a line item for 155,390 for retirement expenses. That, that's again, going to pay towards that TC DRS retirement benefit for employees. But then you'll also see another line item for $200,000 of prior service credit. Again, another approved budget item that's going towards the retirement system. But if you look down at the bottom, and I have it highlighted for you, we have a capital outlay of $18,000. We generally always have a small amount of capital outlay in the event that we need to do something for that year. But they also had a capital outlay for land and building of $200,000. These were put into the budget. Now, what I will say is this, as the year went by and as we had some excess proceeds or we had monies that were, went unspent, the board had the ability to choose whether or not, let me say it this way, they had the ability to choose to obligate those funds. If they didn't obligate them, then they remained excess proceeds. And as the mayor's saying, by state law, I'm required to send excess proceeds back to you. But they, but they took action, and I'm, I'm showing you, if you, if you look at, if you look at the next, Jeff?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So this retirement system, it started back in 2016. And you're telling us how it, how it's funded, how, how you had it in the budget.
Well, I didn't have it in the, but how the, how the board put it in the budget.
How the board put it in the budget. So tell me, why was there so much money going to that, to that retirement system?
Okay. When, when we, when we, when we have TC DRS, the TC DRS program is such that the employee contributes 7% of their paycheck, every payroll, and the appraisal district puts in 7% towards the payroll. But there's also a factor that TC DRS looks at, because, for example, if, if I have in my account, so to speak, $50,000 that I've put in over time, mine's not that big, but let's just say, and the district has put in $50,000 over time. There's another fund of, of money that's into the TC DRS that's part of the appraisal district. And, and that money over here, it builds up. So in reality, 7% comes in from the employee. It's kind of like the city's retirement system. 7% comes in the employee, and about anywhere from 8% to 12% comes in from the appraisal district. 7% is to match the employees, but the other amount is to go towards providing funds for the unfunded liability. When the board of directors made the decision to do the prior year service credit for the employees, TC DRS came back and said, okay, there's years worth of, of service that has not been funded. The employees, the employees had not been putting in any of the money in there. So there was a gap that needed to be taken care of. And if, if you look, actually, it's in, it's in one of the slides here. I'd have to find it real quick. But there's a, there was one year, and I think it was 2018, that TC DRS said the required contribution rate would be 39.9%. Instead of 11 or 12, it's going to be 40%. And there were other years that that required rate had to be 50% because they were having to buy back some of the prior year service credit so that this, the fund for the Hood County, Hood Central Appraisal District with TC DRS would be of a certain size that it could fund retirements into the future. Right now, that fund for us is set, it's, it has about 3.7 million dollars in it, and we're about 90% funded today. If we put in another, I think it's $450,000, we could get to 100% funding in that particular account. So that's the reason that there was so much money being needed. And while we budgeted some monies, and we had some, we had some monies budgeted for the retirement part, but we also had some monies budgeted for the prior year service part, when the district would get to the end of the year, the board of directors would consider, is there any more money we can put towards the retirement obligation that we have? And then it transitioned, we want to build a building, and then they started putting some of the monies towards the land and building project and obligating those funds.
Sure.
I have a question on that retirement program. Did, did the district ever pay any portion of the employees' benefits that they normally would have paid if they'd been in the program? The 7% required match that they have to put in, did the district ever put that in on their behalf to catch them up, so to speak?
Not to my knowledge. And I know there's been some, some rumors that.
Well, I know. That's why I'm asking here.
Yeah. And, and I have, I had some employees that came to, when this issue kind of has come up, I've actually had some employees too that were saying, yeah, I heard that extra money was going into Bob's account, extra money. No, we actually put in a phone call today just to, to ensure that that answered, that question was answered. And we never did get a phone call back from them. But.
Did any of the employees invest in the catch-up provision that you're aware of?
I don't, I don't know. I'm not certain.
Because that seems to me like that would cause you to have a 39% increase in your funding to fund that backlog of people buying into the system to increase their retirement because you did that, or the board did that provision to allow them to buy in.
I, I'm not certain of that answer because obviously I wasn't there. And my, my assistant, who now does accounts payable and accounts receivable, she actually wasn't in that role or position either when the monies were being put in there. The individual has since retired.
It's all available through the, through the website, I'm sure. And I'll get with you and follow up on that.
Okay. Yeah. And I'm trying to.
I'd like to kill that rumor.
Absolutely. And I would too, because I'd like to, like to kind of kill it for the remaining staff that's still there.
Okay. You know, I, I know, in this continuation of the conversation we have yesterday, but for example, that you just used, the 2020 capital outlay adopted was 200,000. And on, and then on the, in the minutes, on May 19th, 2021, a motion was made by Mark Jackson to retain 2020 fiscal year fund balance of 605,623 to be applied to the land and building fund. This motion was seconded by Terry Johnson. That's, you know, 405,000 that the board chose to spend for land and building, yet the entities said, yeah, it's okay if you have 200,000, but you spend another, but the board spent another 400,000.
Yes, sir. And that, that's one of those things that you and I are struggling to meet in the middle on. And that, and that is, is that at the end of the year, when there's excess proceeds, you know, and as I said before, yes, they had budgeted a certain amount of money for the land and building, but then they came up with excess proceeds and then they made the decision to go ahead and obligate those monies towards that land and, land and building project. And, and I've seen, I've seen this done through appraisal districts for many, many, many years. And, and again, it's, as I said earlier, it's gone through four different auditing firms. And I've, and I've had three different attorneys advise me that, yep, that's the proper way to do it. And again, I, I have an attorney general's opinion that kind of weighs in on this to some extent. And it says that the board has the authority to do this, and the, and the comptroller's office has given, has even spoken out and said that there is authority in which the board can't obligate funds. And once, and once the vote is taken, it says, well, I'll paraphrase to some extent, once the vote's taken, the funds are obligated and are no longer in the excess funds category. But if there is no vote, in fact, the, the person who was actually asking for the attorney general had said, well, what if we have an automatic provision that all excess funds go to land, to building improvement? And the attorney general came back and says, well, you don't tell us exactly how that automatic process works. But yet, in another section of that, that, that opinion, it says, if the vote for that happens, it's obligated. And what I interpreted, because I'm not a lawyer, but what I interpreted that to mean is when a vote's taken to obligate something, it, it changes from excess funds to obligated. But if you have some other kind of mechanism that doesn't require a vote, they don't become obligated and they remain excess funds.
Okay. And I've not read that, I know you provided it, and I've not read the Gatsby 14, but it's just been a day. I will get to it.
Yeah. And I, and I will say too, that I agree with the mayor from a standpoint that nowhere in the property tax code does the tax code indicate us as a primary government. I think that is a term that our auditors, our current auditors use. They actually said that the Hood Central Appraisal District is a political subdivision of the state of Texas, and they are a primary government. When the mayor asked me about that, I said, you know, I'm not certain about that primary government phrase. I've never, never seen it before. And it's definitely not in the tax code. I searched for that. So.
Mr. Law, can y'all go back to the, the chart where it has all the, the excess funds?
Let me, Carl.
Right here. Thank you. So, Mr. Law, so let's start with 2018. Where are those funds now?
Those particular funds there, since they were retained and applied to the retirement, those funds were transferred to the TC DRS organization.
Okay. 2019, where are those funds?
Again, those are retirement funds that were transferred to TC DRS.
Uh, list 220, where are those funds?
2020, it says retain 200,000 for, basically for retirement, then 166,000 for contingencies and emergencies. The 200,000 is with TC DRS. The 166,860 was retained for contingencies and, and emergencies. And if you guys, when you look at your actual audits, you, a lot of times will see, and I don't know how your auditors call it, but you'll a lot of times see a fund balance. Sometimes it's undesignated fund balance, it's uncommitted fund balance. It can sometimes be a fund balance for reserves and contingencies. That money is the 166,000 was in our fund balance for a number of years.
Okay. So where's 2021's excess funds?
Those funds were retained, fund balance applied to the building fund. Again, that 605 would have been, would have wound up in our fund balance account, our undesignated or unreserved fund balance.
And where are they at now?
They now have been returned to all the taxing entities of Hood County.
Okay. And 2022's, where's that 937?
It, it's also been returned to the, let me, let me rephrase that. The 937,000, 805,000 of it were capital outlay, land and building, which has been returned to the taxing entities. But right now, in, in, I'm sorry, I may have that backwards. I'll talk about the committed funds in a minute if you'll remind me. But the majority of that money has been returned back to the taxing entities of Hood County.
And 2023?
Same thing. Returned back to the taxing entities of Hood County. Now, when I say remind me the committed.
Yes.
At the end of 2023, I asked the board to set up three committed funds, a litigation committed fund, a technology committed fund, and a building, repair, and maintenance committed fund. And we put, we put monies, we put 50,000 in the litigation fund, we put 20,000 in the building maintenance fund, I believe it is, we put 40,000 in, in the technology fund for a total of 110,000. That money still remains with the district in those committed funds, which it's reported in our fund balance.
Was that 110,000 in the approved budget last year?
It's not, it's not a budget item. It's a, it's a committed fund that the auditors showed us how to set up. It's the, it's a fund that the board of directors has control over. Nobody can take the money, put money in, nobody can take money out. I actually came before this city council. You guys had actually tried to pass a resolution to disapprove it. But it, it's in our fund balance is where, and it's listed on our audit as being part of our committed funds and our fund balance. And when, when and if we get to the point where we want to spend the money on. And when, when and if we get to the point where we want to spend the money on technology or litigation, I'll go to the board of directors and say, we need to pull some money out of this to go towards this particular cause. But it's, it's not a, it's not a specific expenditure item at this particular time, it's held as a committed fund.
And how many employees are there that participate in this retirement fund?
In Hood County, there's, there's twenty employees right now.
And wow. So there's twenty employees and the retirement's hundreds of thousands of dollars a year?
Well, I mean, again, they were playing catch-up to some extent to do this prior year service credit. I mean, each, each employee contributes seven percent of their salary into this fund. I mean, are you asking me for Hood County or are you asking me for the entire state of Texas?
Well, no, I'm just, because the part that Hood County's paying is what we owe, right?
The, the part that-
And we're not paying for the state, we're just paying for Hood County.
No, yes, we're just paying for what, what is required to put back for the employees in their retirement system. It's just very, very similar to what the, the city has in its retirement system.
So why would you, why would you provide this type of benefit to an employee?
Well, I think all employees want to come and enjoy working at a place where they have nice benefits, they have, you know, have a livable salary and someplace that, you know, with a nice retirement system, they might create some longevity, they might stick around for a while, they might not job, jump from job to job. It's just, uh, it's, it's a, it's a benefit that you offer to your employees to come and work for you.
Do, with your prior, prior experience, do most appraisal districts do this?
Yes. Almost all of them do.
And what's their percentage of, like, you said there's a certain percentage of liability, what does that, you said, what percentage was that?
Uh, I, I, I know some, we at Hood County are at ninety percent funded. When I was at the Tarrant Appraisal District, we, we, sometimes we were ninety-six percent funded, sometimes we were ninety-four percent funded, depends on how well the stock market did and the investments grew. I know some appraisal districts that are a hundred percent funded and I know some that are, that are in the high eighties percent. When I first went to TAD, we were at eighty percent funded and while I was there, I was able to get us up to ninety-four percent funded.
So tell me, how much of a budget increase from last year's budget to this year's budget is, is this, is this budget?
Um, it's about seven, the adopted budget will be about seven point, seven point four percent increase.
Just for the city portion?
No, 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 just for the city. The city last year, let me, let me look here. The city last year contributed in our, to our budget about two hundred and fourteen, little over two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars annually. This year, they will contribute, I think it's two, two twenty-eight, two-
So roughly nine thousand dollars increase?
Yeah, let me, let me double check my, my math. Yeah, two, yeah, two hundred and twenty-eight. So it went from two hundred and fourteen thousand to two hundred, it'll, it'll go from two hundred and fourteen thousand, your annual contribution, to two twenty-eight.
But the, you know, the, the, the question that, that we have, and I understand the, you know, the, how the money got spent in the appraisal district, but that money being spent was never brought to the entities. It was approved by the board, just like the six hundred and five thousand by, by the board to do the building. It, the, the issue that I have is that we look at this budget and you say, we're going to spend this and it doesn't, at the end of the year, actually, I don't know how you can do this at the end of the year, you have to wait until the, the, the books are closed to see you're actually into the next year when you're saying that you want to commit the excess funds. But each year, I mean, you look at the history, each year you have four, five hundred thousand dollars in excess funds.
Well, I, I don't, I don't have a lot of experience right now with each year. I mean, yes, I'm not going to, prior budgets and prior boards, you know, may have had that. I don't think that we're going to have, I don't think we'll have that this year for twenty, for twenty twenty-four.
So, so Mayor, my question is, what part of the budget, because we've, we've talked about historical knowledge, but most of that is not even related to what the issues are at hand with the budget that was presented to the council. So what, tell me what's in that budget that you were, you don't like, that you want it to be disapproved?
Five hundred thousand dollars of salaries, car expenses, you know, the benefits, et cetera, are, that's basically the increase in the budget and that's extra people. And you have the same volume of, of parcels or less that are going to be done and we're running twenty percent, actually, we run thirty percent more than E-Rath, but E-Rath doesn't collect and I've determined that that's about a thirteen percent increase. So, you know, we're running higher, we're running higher than surrounding counties and we're adding people with reduced volume or in the budget, it's proposed.
So, so Mr. Law, why, why would, why does the HCAD pay more than what E-Rath would do? Why, why would, why is there a big difference?
Well, what, what I think the mayor's referring to is a lot of times we appraisal districts will say, take their budgets and divide it by the number of parcels and they come up with a per parcel price. I, I, I sat down today and went through and looked at what the mayor had provided our board of directors on an analysis of per parcel prices of appraisal districts. And I, I'm very familiar with the, the website that you got the information from, the comptroller's website, the operational surveys. However, I had a lot of problems finding the same numbers that you did. I mean, one, one, for example, was Reagan County, which you had put on there as having sixty-nine thousand parcels. What, what my spreadsheet came up was that they had ninety-seven thousand parcels. And on top of that, I found that that particular appraisal district contracts out one hundred percent of the appraisal process and they only have two employees. And, and so there, there were several comparisons that were being made that I, I would like to have a little bit more time to go through and look at that. Now, with regards to people, we're only proposing at this particular time, one extra employee at the appraisal district. When I was there in two, from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and eight, I had two deputy chief appraisers that worked with me and assisted me in the process. When I left in two thousand and eight to go to Tarrant County, Mr. Stewart took my place and, and I don't know all the details, but I know that Mr. Stewart replaced himself as the deputy chief, because he advanced to chief appraiser. And I know at some point in time, Mr. Eddie Rowe became the deputy chief appraiser at the appraisal district. And then when Mr. Stewart retired and Mr. Rowe was advanced to the chief appraiser position, it's my understanding that Mr. Rowe never replaced himself as the deputy chief. He probably should have, he could have probably used the help and the assistance while he was in that, in the deputy, the chief appraiser's position. So for many, many, many years, the Hood County Appraisal District has had a deputy chief position and I want to return, reopen that position, bring it back. And I believe, and again, I'm just going on hearsay because I wasn't there, but when the twenty twenty-four budget was adopted, it was my understanding, because some of the entities had disapproved the original proposed budget in twenty twenty-four, one of the easy things to do was just cut the deputy chief position out, adjust some other function, other pieces down and was able to get the budget passed. I think, I think we do need the position of deputy chief. I have, I have one employee that's already announced their retirement, is a long-tenured staff member that's going to be retiring. I'm going to probably utilize that particular open spot to, to fulfill that deputy position. But when you talked about accounts going down, actually, our accounts are, are, it, you have to look at the accounts more particularly. If you go to the very last page of, of my handout, I, I broke this out today so that you could see what our accounts are actually doing, going all the way back to nineteen, uh, two thousand and eighteen. That, that number where it says total number of parcels, it starts at seventy thousand one ninety-nine and you can see that it does fluctuate. Went from seventy thousand one to seventy-two-five, then it dropped to seventy thousand one hundred. And then it dropped to sixty-nine-nine, then seventy-two-two, then seventy-one-seven. And then again, it's dropped in twenty twenty-four to sixty-eight-eight fifty-seven. And the question would be, why in the world are the accounts fluctuating that much? Is land disappearing? No, it's not. When I go in and I look at our mineral accounts, look at how our mineral accounts have fluctuated over the years. And then look at the real, real and personal accounts, less than minerals, we've gone fifty-one-eight, fifty-two-six, fifty-two-five. Now, there was a decrease there and I looked into it and we had a hundred and sixteen mobile homes that went away. That, that's why we had, we saw a decrease in accounts there. But then it went back to fifty-two-eight, fifty-four-nine, fifty-five-two and now we're up to fifty-six-four. There has actually been a consistent rise in the number of accounts in Hood County since two thousand and eighteen.
That makes sense.
Uh, and it does, it, people are developing, right? Developers are building, they're, they're adding in new lives. Now, I understand there's a kind of a moratorium that's probably slowed that to some extent, but there is still new construction and new development going on. But there has been a fluctuation in the mineral accounts. Now, we don't, we don't, my staff doesn't appraise the mineral accounts. We hire that out to an inside, outside contractor that specializes in mineral appraisals and they're the ones that appraise that. So the need for staff, the, the demand for the activity of staff hasn't changed, it's actually grown. And so I want to add that deputy chief appraiser back into the, back into the budget and I'd like to maintain that appraiser position for this particular type of work. So our accounts, the accounts that the appraisal district staff works is increasing, it's not decreasing.
Thank you for providing this. How do you pay, how do you pay the people that do the mineral accounts?
We, we actually go out for an RFP and there's about four or five different-
I mean, by, do you pay by parcel or do you pay gross or?
No, they, they, we pay a gross amount. They come in and they bid and they, they do mineral accounts, they do utility appraisals, all your telephone electricity, they also do pipeline, all the pipelines that run through the town. And then we have a few industrial type properties. They do Wolf Hollow, they do the Bitcoin facility and they do some large industrial properties. And we, we would do an RFP to say, this is what we want you to appraise, all these minerals, all these royalty accounts, the pipelines, utilities and so and so. And then the appraisal companies come back with a proposal saying that we'll do this work for this price. And usually we ask them to do a, a three to five-year bid so that we don't have to go out and do the RFPs every year. We get a, get, kind of get a long-term agreement with them.
The audit shows that we have a two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollar excess funds this year. We're going to get our money back or can you just use it for the forensic audit or?
Well, we, we possibly can use it for whatever we need to. Now, I, I will say, I mean, I know the audit says two ninety-four and you and I both looked at that number. There's also a number of four hundred and twenty-six thousand of, of ex, of fund balance that we have, which a hundred and ten thousand of it is in those committed funds that were set up, which would leave about three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Now, this, this is another fundamental question that needs to be answered with the board and, and council. Auditors are telling us, attorneys are advising us that an appraisal district, because we are a special purpose local government set up by the state of Texas, that we ought to have a fund balance. Now, it's arguable what that fund balance could be. The auditors have always told me two to three months, two to three months worth of fund balance. And if you take, well, what's that number? If you take two months up against our three million dollar budget, it's about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I have three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, which represents one point two months of fund balance. If I have, if I refund all that three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars back to the taxing entities and I, I hold on to that a hundred and ten thousand of committed funds, we will have zero fund balance. And I don't necessarily believe that's a prudent thing for a governmental entity to do. Now, I will tell you, I, I'm, I would be happy with a, with a two-month fund balance, I'd be happy with a one-month fund balance if, if everybody would be agreeable to that. But then the question becomes, is that three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars excess funds that need to be refunded or is it, can it be attributed to leaving in the fund balance so that the appraisal district? And, you know, Eddie and I were talking not long ago about the fact that what if a tornado came through and tore up our building? And all of a sudden, we found ourselves in a situation where we need to get out now, we need to relocate into temporary facilities or whatever. If I didn't have a fund balance, I couldn't sit around and wait for insurance to come in and pay, pay us money so we could make the move. I, I would need some kind of fund balance. If a bad tornado came in, I'd probably be, have to come back to the entities and say, we, we need even more money to, to move out, relocate. Then once the insurance comes through and everything, it would replenish the monies that we have. So that, that's kind of a horrific type of approach, but that would be an example of why an appraisal district, why a governmental entity would need a fund balance of some sort to, to have available funds in the case of a catastrophic issue or something like that.
You know, in which case, every entity that funds you also has a fund balance.
Absolutely. And they're-
So what do you say to that question related to the mayor? He's like, we are your fund balance.
Well, I appreciate that, but I know, I know for purposes, I know of taxing entities that have not paid their quarterly installment payments timely. And if you get into a situation in which some of the taxing units don't pay, I, I actually had one and I won't call any names, but I had one in, in Tarrant County one time, a very large taxing entity, they didn't pay us for three months. And so we, thankfully, we had a fund balance, it wasn't an issue, but we had to literally go down to them and meet with their finance director and say, why haven't you made your quarterly payment? And actually, there's a provision in the law too that says that if they don't make their quarterly payment on time, there's a fine that, that gets associated and the board of directors can actually waive that fine. Well, I'll also say that Hood County are people, the Hood County taxing entities, we've actually had one incident where one of our taxing entities here did not pay on time. And again, it didn't create a, a big problem because at that time, we had a little bit of a fund balance. But I, that's another reason why I believe that it's important for a governmental entity to have a fund balance, because if your revenue gets shut off, if your revenue gets turned off, then you may have a problem making payroll, paying the bills, so on and so forth.
Mr. Mr. Law, how many of these taxing entities have came to you and said, you know, we have this issue with your, with your budget?
None. I, I presented this budget to the board of directors on June the thirteenth and we turned around and sent it out to all the taxing entities required by law by June the fifteenth. It's been roughly a little over sixty days and I have not had a single telephone call from any taxing entities, I haven't had a single call from any elected officials concerning our twenty twenty-five budget. I actually talked to a couple of our board members today and asked them, has anybody called you all and said, hey, I, I had a small problem with the budget, can we talk about this or that? And they haven't received any telephone calls either. This is the first that, now the mayor and I did meet yesterday and we, we had a great meeting. And, but really, we were talking more about the historical aspect of the committed funds and, and what the board had done in the past as opposed to the whole opposing of the, he has made his point clear to me in our meeting yesterday that he thinks that our budget should be a little smaller. But I, I hope the, the council appreciates the fact of the budget that I presented this year. I mean, our budget went from two pages to almost forty pages long, because I tried my best to go through and break our budget apart by departments and actually lay out as many of the costs and the expenses that I thought we would incur in the twenty twenty-five year. I've listed all the employees, I've listed their salaries, there is no fluff in this budget whatsoever, there are no extra employees that won't be hired, there's nothing like that. The one, the, the two area or the three areas that I could say that, you know, have to be estimated fairly well is the area of litigation, the area of the ARB expenses that we will experience. And then I don't know who might quit, I don't know who, I do know of one person that will retire, but I don't know what's going to happen from a personnel standpoint. So did I over-budget the amount of paper we're going to need or the number of envelopes that we're going to need? I, I tried to use historical information and talking to staff to figure out what, what would be the best number to put in there. But I've tried my best to make you all a, a comprehensive budget that telegraphs and it, it tells you everything that's going on at the appraisal district.
So talk to me about litigations and protest. How, how does, how do those fluctuate so much?
It all, the market really dictates, dictates most of it. When, the last really, really strong real estate market that we have had has precipitated a great number of protests, like last year, for example, in the year twenty, got to think about this, I think maybe it was twenty twenty-two. Was it twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty? I wasn't there when this happened, but we had a record number of seventy-five-hundred protests. The appraisal district had never had that before in its entire history. And that particular time caused for way more ARB hearings, which the appraisal review board that's appointed by Judge Buffkin actually comes and sits as a- which the appraisal review board that's appointed by Judge Buffkin actually comes and sits as a, uh, I won't say volunteer because they get a, they get paid a per diem to be there, but they hear taxpayer protest, and they get paid a hundred-and-seventy-five dollars a day to come in and do that job. And I generally have three of them there every, every single time. You don't know how many people are gonna file protest. And then, if the appraisal review board rules, say, in favor of or sustains the value of the appraisal district, then the property owner has the right to either go to binding arbitration or go to, uh, take us to, to court in a lawsuit. We had, uh, over fifty lawsuits filed in twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three. I still have forty active lawsuits right now that, that are twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three.
Mr. Rodriguez, I have some questions on this side when you finish up here.
Okay, I didn't see any red, red light there.
There's one. Mr. Sorel?
Jeff, I just wanted to clarify something that you said earlier. That kind of struck me a little odd. You said that when the board takes an action, uh, to spend some funds, that it's committed. In your opinion, it's committed at that moment?
Yes, sir, I was kind of reading from that general, that attorney general's. Uh, I wasn't reading from him, I was paraphrasing from that attorney general's.
Okay.
Because it says when the, when the vote is taken, the funds are obligated.
With the opinion.
Okay.
And I don't believe that's actually what it says. It actually says that it's still subject to the requirements of, of chapter six of the tax code. You still need to do a budget amendment if you're gonna move some funds, and the action still has to come before the entities, correct?
Well, again, I'll, I'll, I'll have to say, my attorney that I get advice from gives me different advice than what your.
Attorney general's opinion says that. It says that it's still subject to chapter six.
Well, and I, I agree with that, that if, if, uh, if the board, anytime the board makes a decision under six-point-one of the tax code, the taxing units can take action to disapprove of that particular item. I, I agree with you on that.
Six-ten, right?
Yeah, six-ten, mhm. And, and they can.
It's not actually committed just because the board takes action. It's committed subject to the taxing units reviewing and approving or disapproving it, correct?
Well, I, no, I think I would say it is obligated. I'm gonna use the word obligated because that's what the law says. It is obligated, and then if the taxing units within the thirty-day timeframe disapprove, and then it's gotta be a majority, it would remain obligated if it didn't get disapproved.
If it doesn't get disapproved, right. But it still goes through the process. I just wanna make sure that it's.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with you on that at all because it, the taxing units would have to take that action.
The second part of that question then is, what is, what is, what does committed or obligated mean to, to the, the appraisal district?
I believe that at the, at the close of a year or at the time in which they know when funds are available, if the, if it's put on the agenda, okay, in, in, for public consumption, at a public meeting, and then the board says, I make a motion to commit these funds or obligate these funds for this particular purpose, and they, and a vote, a positive vote is taken, then I believe at that particular time, then those funds have been committed.
Well, that, that's, uh, that's not what the attorney general says, actually. Under ninety-four oh, oh-six-seven, it says that they either have to be, to be obligated or committed. They either have to be spent, or there has to be a contract to be spent in the next year.
Well, I, I, and I, when I started that, I prefaced that I'm not an attorney.
If, if the board took action and just said, we're gonna put this into a fund for a building later, in your mind, is that committed?
In, in my mind, yes, it is. If they've taken the proper action with regards to placing it on the agenda, having a public meeting, and taking a public vote, then I, I believe, well, the way I read the attorney general's opinion, that yes, that would be obligated.
So, it, it's then, and maybe not your opinion, maybe your opinion, the board's opinion, whoever's opinion over there, maybe your lawyer's opinion, that you're an independent governmental entity? You're subject to all of the local government code, just like all the other governmental entities except procurement?
Our procurement rules through the property tax code are essentially the same as the municipality.
So, you can't commit anything then until the taxing units approve it?
I, I don't, I don't know that I agree with that. I have not been advised that way in the past by my attorneys.
Okay. So, going back to some of the historical, just, just real quick here. I, I, I understand some of the, um, some of the retained funds that weren't refunded back relating to the retirement, and you guys are gonna continue to have conversations about that, that's, that's fine. What about, and, and you provided some minutes for that, and, and, and I appreciate that. But we've had conversations about many of these issues and, and whether we could find minutes. Were you ever able to find any minutes related to the some three-hundred-thousand-dollar architectural contract that was spent on a contract that was valued at thirty thousand dollars? Were there ever any budget amendments or, or actions taken by the board regarding that contract?
There are, there are minutes where the board authorized the, the, uh, payment of invoices. Now, let me.
Was the contract ever amended? Are there any minutes, is there any action by this board ever amending that contract that you've been able to locate?
That, not that I've been able to locate, no.
Were there ever any budget amendments authorized by the board presented to the entities for approval?
Not that I have been able to find.
Okay, what about, um, another, uh, issue that I'd asked you about? We're maybe trying to find minutes on some geotech engineering that was done on property not owned by the HCAD, not under contract by the HCAD, not part of a feasibility period, uh, that the HCAD have. But the HCAD spent money on geotech. Are there any minutes related to any of that?
Minutes that would say what?
Minutes that would authorize someone to do geotech on someone else's property, engineering on someone else's property, uh, minutes of a, a budget amendment allocating funds for that specific purpose? Because I can't find them in any of the minutes.
I, I, I don't know, as I answered your question earlier, I don't know, I haven't been able to find any particular minutes that would indicate a budget amendment. I do have, if you look in some of the, and I could take you back for the sake of time, I won't, was that you, you believe that what I'm telling you is true. The board actually did authorize in two different years budgets the expenditure of monies, two-hundred-thousand dollars each year for the expenditure of building and land capital outlay. And the payments that were made to this architect and to these engineering funds were made. There, there was one made, um, the first payments that were made did not, that, that particular year in the budget, it did not have any money budgeted, but they believe they took it out of the, the capital outlay fund balance. The subsequent year, there was about eighty-three thousand dollars that were paid to, uh, for architectural fees. I'm, I'm not sure what all that went to. I mean, I, I.
We don't have to go through all the technical issues of that. What, what I'll say is, is a couple of things that could serve me are, are that, the fact that you, you use the words, you believe that this happened, and I understand you weren't there, so we don't know. And the fact that it, it is not okay to expend money from a line item for something else that it's not allocated for without going through the processes. I think we can agree that the legal processes were not complied with for the expenditure of those funds.
Well, but I, but I would say that in two years, the board did, uh, approve and put a line item of two-hundred-thousand dollars for each one of those years, and then sent it to the entities. No disapproval of that. And then the board made expenditures out of that particular line item that was in the budget. So, there wasn't a budget amendment, there was an adopted budget that covered it.
But we don't know that that's where they spent that money or where it came from because there are no minutes saying, here's a budget amendment, this is where the money is coming from, this is the line item we're moving it from over to this, and we're, we're authorizing the expenditure for this specific contract.
There would not have been a need, in, in two of those years, there would have been no need to move it from here to there. There, there was money already in that line item. Now, there were two years, the last year, there was two-hundred-thousand-dollar budgeted, but they spent two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand. Now, I, I don't see anything that covered the other twenty-nine thousand, and there wasn't a, anything in the, the minutes that reflected how you're gonna deal with that. But there were times in which.
For, for time purposes, I'll, I'll just stop you right there. And the, the last thing I'll say is, the, right, exactly what you just said, the mere fact that we cannot say where our money has gone is exactly why this budget should include a forensic audit.
Well, I don't think that's, um, that's true, but, um, okay.
Tell me where the money is. It's my tax dollars, where is it?
Okay, it's my tax dollars too, it's everybody's tax dollars here.
You're not concerned to know where it is?
Well, we are concerned, so.
Then we can get a forensic audit.
Tell me how that is related to approving, uh, the HCAD budget. I mean, how is that? I, I don't need your, I'm, I'm asking the mayor, this is the mayor's, uh, agenda item, okay? So, I'm asking the mayor, what part of the budget, what part of the budget that you disagree with that it constitute disapproval?
I do not agree that you need extra staff. Uh, I don't agree that they need extra staff. And I have, we have to figure out some way that you get, we give you the same budget, then at the end of the year, it's another three-hundred-thousand dollars that is excess funds that goes to, you know, you know, to ice cream or whatever the heck it is you're gonna buy. It doesn't matter. So, the only way that we, based on the conversations that Mr. Law and I've had, the only way that, with committed funds, the only way that we can prevent that from happening is to reduce the total amount of the budget. And then, at the end of the year, if he needs more money, he should come back to the people that provide him the money. As he said, we're buying a service. We're being billed for a service, a service that either we didn't get or we got overbilled. So, don't pay the amount that's being asked for so that we can not be taken advantage of at the end of the year.
If I might add to that, Mayor.
Yeah.
In this particular budget, there, there are no future items out there that the board's looking to fund. There's, there has been no more talk about a building. There is, the, the issues of the retirement, catching, doing that catch-up provision on the prior year, so, that's all, that's all done. And we, and we refunded back to the entities one-point-nine million dollars of all the excess funds that they had accumulated over time for this building project. There are no other pet projects out there that would exist. So, if, if we do get to a point at the end of the twenty-four or the twenty-five budget, ever, all the excess funds come back?
Well, I, you know, it gives you, uh, you, you just gave the perfect example. One-point-nine million got refunded, but it was also held for three and a half, four years, which we could have been using that money during that period of time. Seven-hundred thousand, I think, that, you know, that's over and above what got budgeted. About one-point-four to one-point-six million actually got put into the retirement fund. That the entities never had a clue what was going in there, and the entities are providing the money for this service. I'm not pleased at all with the transparency that's happening with the money that's being spent. Just answer, you know, the question that was down here. The four-hundred, three-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars that got paid for, uh, architect appraisal, surveys of property that we also didn't own, or the H, the HCAD did not own, all of that. Where did that go and why? We need a forensic audit. A forensic audit would answer every one of these questions at, in great detail.
Okay, Mayor.
We need to spend the money on the forensic audit.
That forensic audit was already an issue with resolution twenty-four oh-two.
And, and it's been, it's been already addressed. So, you've already, you've already put the forensic audit on the city council and made a resolution.
Right, it's tonight.
All right. Now, now, this is another resolution for, for the same request that you had previously.
Right, it still hasn't been delivered.
Okay, so, what, what is your, what is your ultimate goal to get out of this? That's what I don't understand. You know, the HCAD in two thousand eighteen, none of the board members that are, that are here in twenty-twenty-four were in twenty-eighteen. The, the chief appraiser at that time in twenty-eighteen is no longer the chief appraiser. Uh, the board president or chairman for twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, and twenty-twenty, and twenty-twenty-one is already passed away. So, tell me.
What?
What, what is your plan for this?
I want the, uh, one million dollars, the seven-hundred thousand that went into the retirement fund over and above anything that was budgeted, and the four-hundred thousand dollars that went to the architects that, uh, you know, for, was for a bridge that was never gonna be built, I want that returned to the Hood County taxpayers in proportional amounts, and then I'll be happy.
How, how do you, what's the plan to get that money back from?
I'm asking you, you ask me what I wanted. I'm asking you for the plan.
Well, you can't get that money back.
I'm sorry, folks, you ain't getting that money back, you heard it here first.
Here's a plan, Mayor. You, if you want that money back, we can, we can do it. If, if this forensic audit, and I'm not a, we're not a, the HCAD is not opposed to having the forensic audit, all right?
Not under the terms you provided.
Well, the HCAD board had given you a resolution saying if you want it, all the entities that have approved for the forensic audit can pay for it.
A forensic audit, that you choose the audit, or you choose the scope of the audit, and you choose the outcomes will be delivered at some point in the future. No, not on those terms, we will not take a forensic audit for that. We want a forensic audit, we'll set the terms because it's our money that we're looking for.
No, you're paying for a service. You want, uh, an audit, you want a forensic audit, you have to give it to the HCAD to get the forensic audit, that's how it works.
Well, let's go ahead and, uh, let's, uh, yes, Mr. Coughlin.
I would like to put on my mediator hat. I've actually been trained as a mediator. What I see here is the budget is, um, submitted to us in a, in an electronic format and said, hey, this is our budget, we adopted it. The council has so many days after that to meet and talk about this very item if they want and reject the budget. And, and, and so, that's, we all agree, that's happened, right? That's what you've done, is you submitted us a budget that the board voted on.
Actually, we'll probably be sending you the adopted budget, probably tomorrow. We've sent you a, a proposal.
Oh, we got, we got the actual budget that you adopted, yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Meg's, Meg's on top of it.
Good-looking document. Okay, so, we've done that, we, we all agree, that's the right process.
Correct.
What I'm hearing tonight is the other process. To amend that budget, you don't feel like you need to do the same type notice. You feel like the, and your attorney is obviously advising you this, all you gotta do is post it on an agenda, and it's up to everybody to follow you.
Let me, let me try to be a little clearer.
That's the way I see it from both sides, that, I'm just being the mediator here. Addressing what I see as the problem is that irreconcil, irreconcilable difference of how this notice happened.
Right, well, one of the differences of, of, of opinion that the mayor and I have is that when I amend the budget, I'm gonna come back to the taxing entities and say, I need more money. You know, if you pass the budget, I'm, I, I need, I need three million dollars. But then I come back six months later and say, hey, I need a half a million dollars more. So, I now, now I need my budget to be three and a half million dollars.
Increase.
Increase. That, that is a, an amendment, as I've been trained, as I've been, had sought legal advice over and things like that. If I come along and I say, you know what? We had some employees quit, we were able to ha, have a person retire, we brought in a new one at a lower salary, and I wanna move money from salaries to something else, office supplies. That would be what I would refer to as a line item transfer and not a budget amendment. We're not, we, we still have the same budget, we're still have the same requirement of money from.
I understand that.
The third part would be this committed fund thing, to where.
The surplus fund being committed to something, and you don't feel like it needs to go through the same process as the actual budget?
Well, I'm just saying that, that's what I've been, that's what I've been advised.
Yeah, that's what you're, do you have an AG ruling on that?
No, I've just had legal opinions from attorneys saying that, that if, if you want a good example, again, I apologize for talking about Tarrant County, but I have a fifteen years of time up there. From time to time, the board would say, we wanna pay down our unfunded liability. That wouldn't be in their, their line item budget, but they would come back at the end of the year and say, hey, we have a million dollars left over. So, let's put seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand of it and commit it and send it to TC DRS. It wasn't a line item in the budget, it was just we had excess money, and we wanna use it to the benefit of the district. And when we go to the attorneys and say, how do we do this? This is how you do this. And we never did come back to the entities and say, we're amending the budget to use this excess money.
Again, I say, a well-stated problem is a problem to have solved. So, in our collection agreement with HCAD and the other entities with you, in five D, it says, "In the event that payments received in any one year exceed the actual cost of providing services pursuant to this contract, Central Appraisal District shall either reimburse the jurisdictions to the extent of the excess funds or apply credit to the future payments made to the jurisdictions. Reimbursements or credits shall be distributed to the jurisdictions in the same pro-rata share as payments were made in the year in which the payments exceeded actual cost." So, how do you reconcile what you're doing with that paragraph in the collection agreement?
This right here is a collections agreement. I have to lose everything. What, what, the vast majority of the services that I'm providing to you are appraisal. that I'm providing to you are appraisal services, which are, were by statute, not collection agreements. I have, this is the original, if you don't see the original signatures. It's kind of interesting. Um, but that, that line item says, in the event that payments received in any one year exceed the actual cost of providing services pursuant to this contract. The services pursuant to this contract are collection services. Me acting as your tax, well, the chief appraiser, I won't say me because there's been several. The chief appraiser acting as your tax assessor collector, your chief appraiser mailing the tax bills, taking in the payments, making disbursements to you. And yeah, it says, I, I ran this by my lawyer today.
That's why I'm asking. I wanna hear how you reconcile this.
He kinda said two things. One, this has nothing to do with the appraisal aspect of the services that we're providing. This has to, everything to do with the collection services that we're providing. And then he said, that type of clause should've never been in a collections contract.
But it is.
It is, and, and I will tell you, and I've already talked with Mr. Rodriguez about this, uh, my plan is to come back. This is, this was written in 1981.
Yes, sir. And also in 1981, also in 1981, we have a document where they actually sent us a notice and said, hey, uh, we need to retain some of our surplus funds this year to buy four computers and blah, blah, blah. And it was approved by all the jurisdiction. It was a resolution that was sent to us.
No, I, I.
And so I, I see the, the way it used to be done in our records and the way you're doing it now is not the same. So I don't know the answer to that. And I don't wanna get involved in this civil war. I'm just trying to be a mediator here and, and point out the differences so maybe y'all can reconcile them tonight.
Well, I absolutely don't wanna have a civil war with the city council at all. I, I just wanna, as the chief appraiser, I wanna present a budget that I believe is necessary for us to do the activities that were required by state law to perform and provide the services to you all that you deserve. Uh, and I believe that's, I presented a good budget. I believe I've presented the most comprehensive budget this appraisal district has ever, ever done. The most detailed budget this appraisal district has ever done. Uh, and with issues about forensic audits and with issues about what happened in the past, with issues about past decisions that boards have made regarding retirement, about committed funds, all I can do is assure you that going forward, as I've said before, we're gonna work our best to follow the law exactly the way it is. When and if we ever decide we need a new location, we need a new building, we need to lease something, I've, I've told the mayor multiple times, we will be going through the proper channels and the proper process to do that. Right now is not the time for that. But again, this, this budget that we're submitting and that you're considering disapproving, I, I'm, I hope it's not, has any, it doesn't have anything to do with decisions in the past by the board members or, or chief appraisers in the past have done with regards to committed funds. We have given you back, Mr. Petrie, Richard Petrie, who was the interim, he gave you back really probably more money than what, if we had a, someone look at it, probably gave back more than what he needed to at that particular time.
And let me add something to that.
Yes.
We got it back because the councils and the entities rejected your budget and asked for it. It wasn't, it wasn't willingly given up. It was requested through the same process.
I'll have to trust you on that because I, I wasn't there at that time.
We took the resolution from the past to make the resolution for today. It's the same process. It's, it's, we see the, we see the surplus. We want it back is what the mayor has expressed and that's.
But Chris, that was done by the, the HCAD board in good faith. I mean, they, they knew.
It was done in good faith because the law required you to do it.
They also did it because of the previous actions from the previous boards. And the board of directors at this time wanted to make sure that they were doing and following everything accordingly. It's, it's, it feels, I know that the HCAD board feels like they're getting penalized because we don't wanna put a forensic audit into this budget and it's being held hostage by the mayor, which if he, if he came to the HCAD and came down and said, hey, let's figure this out. Let's figure out how we're gonna do this forensic audit and not hold the budget hostage. If he wants it included in the budget, we have several means and, and ways to put it in there. I mean, I could, the, the HCAD, the chief appraiser can say, hey, we can try to find money within the budget itself or use another, uh, litigations or some line item to pay for the forensic audit. Or we can come back to the taxing entities and amend the budget saying that we are adding the forensic study. Do we have your approval? He can approve it at that time and we can add it. But right now, what he's doing is he's holding this budget from passing because he's not getting the forensic audit in the, in the budget that he wants. We don't even have the estimate from the, uh, a rough estimate or an actual estimate for this forensic audit to put in our budget. So.
But we've been, the council has been asking for it. The council has been asking for it and you have not sought to, to get it, Eddie, and you're part of this council.
I understand that, and I've tried to, the, the, the mayor hasn't came to me and talked to me about anything about a forensic audit or tried to negotiate on the terms of the forensic audit. He wants it his way and that's it. I don't know how many other council people, if I would look around, how many other council people has the mayor reached out and talked to you about the forensic audit?
He can't legally.
All right, he can talk to one other person.
Well, he, I don't know if he has or not, but he can't talk to all of y'all by.
No, he can't.
This is the format for that discussion. And he's already had the resolution for you to do it and it was passed. And you, as the council representative, have not supported that action. You have been subversive to this board asking for that audit.
I haven't been subversive.
As a member of this organization and that organization, you have not done what this council voted to implement. And if I did that, you would fire me.
No, that is not true, Chris. I have tried to accommodate the mayor, but also you have to take.
It's the council. The whole council asked for that forensic audit.
The whole council asked for it, all right?
Yeah.
So did the school board ask for that, all right? That, I'm sorry, the city of Tolar asked for it, all right?
And the county.
And the county asked for it. All the other entities did not respond to it. And the school district disapproved it.
There were actually two that disapproved it.
There was two entities that disapproved it. So you have to balance that with all the other entities. Just because, uh, these entities want it, these entities want it or don't want it, you have to balance that.
You are this entity, sir, elected by the citizens of the city to represent, and this board said, this is what we want.
Chris, hear me clear.
And you're the chairman of that board.
Hear me clearly. We want the audit.
Let's have it then.
All right.
Let's do it.
There's been a resolution back to the city and he hasn't even said anything about it.
Read it, read it. It's got all kinds of caveats and conditions. It's appalling to everybody up here.
Okay, just like we go under the advisement, the city, as a city councilman, we go under the advisement of Jeremy Sorrell, who was our attorney here. You had the same situation at the HCAD. Under the advisement of the attorney, he provided this resolution for us.
I say pay for the audit. Find out where your money's at.
I, I think, I think you should, Mayor, I mean, I'm, the HCAD Board of Directors want this.
Good, good.
I'm supportive of it.
We have a different, uh, agenda right now and a, a resolution right now. And it also has a, a request for a forensic audit net. So anymore.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Wadley.
Is there a couple hundred thousand dollars in this year's budget to back pay the retirement plan? I, I didn't, the budget's a lot more involved. Like you said, it's a lot more pages than it used to be. So I didn't see that specifically.
No, there's, there's no need to back pay it anymore. We're, we've now kinda caught up to that part to where now all we have to do is pay in the required rate that TC DRS tells us to pay.
It says 12% is what they're paying in to match the 7% to keep up with the sustainability.
Yeah, the way that works is the employees pay 7, the district pays 7, but then we have an extra 5 to help kinda get us to that funded, that 100% funded ratio.
Right.
It's like amortized over 20 years or something like that.
So a question I have for our attorney, Jeremy. Um, all this back pay in the retirement plan, I was real uncomfortable reading about all that. Is, is that all legit? Are you good with that? Everything's happened in the past?
No, not at all.
Okay.
And they had a conversation about getting together and discussing that at a later date.
The budget to me, I, I don't, I mean, it all, it, it all looked like a real legit budget. Uh, the mayor had an issue with personnel. I don't know that I have an issue with that at all. You know, I, I trust Mr. Kaufman know what employees he needs for the city. I trust that you know what you need for, to do your job.
Thank you.
The issues I have is that this back paying a retirement plan, I'm uncomfortable with just 'cause I don't understand it. I understand a lot more now after this discussion than what I did coming in here tonight. So I really appreciate that. The other thing that really bothers me is, is this, you know, a motion was made to, to keep the fund balance of 600,000. I know it's been returned, or most of that has been returned at this point, but the fact that that happens is, it, that blows me away. That, that, you know, you, the law requires the money to be returned to the entities and, and in a meeting, yeah, it was posted, but in a meeting that, I don't know how many people attended, you can just say, we're gonna keep the money. And, but the law says you can't. So.
Well, I can't.
And you kind of had an explanation for how you can. But again, you're wanting me, the budget itself, I don't really have a problem with. I do wanna see the forensic audit in the budget. So there's more than just the mayor, I'm just saying. Um, and, and I know that the school board rejected it. They don't wanna pay for it. However, if the bud, if the audit benefits the entities, then they're gonna benefit anyway. And, and, and I think it's fair that everyone pay their, their fair share. If you all have between 200 and 300,000 every year of surplus funds and this audit's gonna cost about 100,000, is, that's the number I was, I heard at the last meeting, then I don't know why it just can't be included in the budget.
Well, it could if we get to the point where we have that 200 to 300,000 left over. I don't know at this particular time how much will be, how much will be surplus. I mean, the budget was cut quite a bit for 2024. But, but I don't, and I, and I can't, I just want you all to know, I cannot stand up here and speak for what happened with pri- previous boards. All, all I was trying to show here was that there was an attempt, I think, made by the board of directors. I don't know who they got their legal advice from or anything like that. But I just wanted, there was some questions with regards that this was unapproved. Well, actually, there's, there were some line items in the budget that had been approved by the board of directors. And then it went through that process of disapproval with no disapproval. So in theory, it was approved. But then, yes, there was some times in which excess proceeds were, were funneled to either a, a potential building project or to, to fulfill and fund this prior year service for the retirement system.
I think, I think the forensic audit would, would clear up the procurement discrepancy. There's procurement laws that, that we as a council, I'm hearing, don't feel like have been followed. Whenever you got a contract for 30,000 and you actually spent over 300, where's the amendment to that contract to increase the scope of work?
Yeah.
Those kinda things would be, would be identified.
And I can't answer those questions.
You're not responsible, you weren't there. Eddie wasn't there, but it needs to be answered. And those issues need, need to reassure everybody that it's not gonna happen again.
Certainly.
You know?
I don't ever want it to happen on my watch.
And so we're trying to build trust here with a forensic audit. To lay it all out for the public to see.
I remember Mr. Vale asked me specifically if I was amenable, I think was the word he used, to a forensic audit. And that was, I, I wasn't necessarily prepared that day to say absolutely or yes or anything like that. Um, I think I'm in a much different place today from a standpoint of saying, yeah, I'm, I am amenable to go through a forensic audit. And, and, but I think the question that Mr. Rodriguez was trying to address is that the school came out pretty forcefully and said, we're not paying for it.
Well, they're one entity out of the seven or eight.
Yeah, and then I had, I had Tolar, I'm sorry, Lipan ISD put it on their agenda and, and they, their board decided just to take no action. And then I have to say, okay, well, all the other entities that didn't do anything, I don't know what their specific emphatic word was, other than the fact that they took no action. So I think the big question is.
Did y'all solicit their?
Absolutely not.
Oh, so how did you expect any action out of them if they didn't know we'd passed a resolution?
I assumed that the, the city sent that resolution to all the other taxing entities.
We did not. We did not.
No, I, I didn't, I didn't send anything to the taxing entities, nor did I call them and ask them what they were going to do. I didn't feel like that's, that's my place to do that.
How do you feel about taking the 294,000 and appropriating whatever you need for the, the surplus from last year towards the, towards the forensic audit?
I would go to my board and ask my board that question.
And Eddie, how, how would you feel about that as the chairman, sitting on your council tonight, hearing what they want?
I've already told you, Chris, I'm all for, for the.
Okay.
I don't like using.
I think we're making progress.
Yeah, I think so too. I've already told you that we, that I think the board, now, I'm gonna speak for myself because just like here in, in the city council, you can only speak for yourself and not for the entire council. So I'm going to speak as, as a HCAD board member, that I'm amenable to having the, the audit done. Now, whether the terminology is considered a forensic audit, or by our, our legal department at the HCAD as some other type of audit, that's, that's up to that legal terminology to be determined. But, you know, his, his job, just like Jeremy's job, is to protect the HCAD, just like Jeremy's job is to protect the council. So the HCAD representative, legal counsel, is going to do whatever it takes to protect its members. Now, I'd be more than willing to have that legal services come down and, and in front of the, of the board, or whatever we have to do, I don't know what the means are, to get with the mayor, since it's just his idol, to get this amended, or put it in, or somehow pay for. But the problem is, is that if you put it in the budget, when, if it, let's take for example, if you put it in the budget, 65% or 60, whatever the levy is, the levy is for the school, that's how much they're going to have to pay. So they're going to have to pay 62% of this. And they've already said they don't want to pay for this study. So you take the biggest entity that's going to have to take the blunt of this audit, that doesn't not want it, is going to have to pay, if it's $100,000, is going to have to pay $62,000. And, and the city is going to have to only pay $7,000 of it. So that's not, so when you, as a board member of the HCAD, you have to try to be fair to all the entities, because you represent not only the city council, not only the Granbury ISD, not only Toll, you have, as, as a board member in that position, you have to take in consideration all the other entities.
Let's, let's take into consideration the people that really paid that money. They're called taxpayers.
Schools, city, county.
Schools, city, county, all of that money came from the taxpayers. So one entity over the other, it all came from, everybody sitting up here, everybody sitting down here, it all came from the taxpayers. So just being a larger collector of taxpayer taxes doesn't give them a, you know, a bigger role than this. Mr. Wadley.
And if the audit was in the budget, just as a, an item where we all pay our fair share, including the school district, I'm curious whether they would actually disapprove your budget over that. They, they might have voted, just to, to exclude that one thing as an, as an item. But if it was in the budget, would they say, well, okay, well, let's just go ahead and take it, you know, we'll just do it?
Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, and that, that is correct, that we could come back. I mean, the board has adopted a, a budget that doesn't have the forensic audit in there, but if we wanted to put it in, we could come back and do a budget amendment, and we could present that out there, and then it falls under, I, I don't think that falls under 6.1. I think it falls under another section in 6.06.
Yep.
Because I think 6.01 is just disapproval of really anything. So they could, they could choose to disapprove that budget amendment, but I think the same majority issue would have to prevail. I mean, I just, one, I don't think one taxing entity can disapprove my budget or an amendment to the budget to be successful. It's got to be a majority, or, and then there are some cases where it's got to be 75% of the taxing entities that have to disapprove. But I think in this, it's just a majority.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sorrell probably has it memorized.
And that's my point, Bruce, is that let's pass this budget, and then have, have the appraisal district do an amended budget so they can add the forensic study into it. And then that amended budget is a separate, separate decision. They already have the approved budget, and then they have amended budget that they're going out, and that's, that's adding the forensic study, and that would be a separate decision that all the entities would have to make.
Let me ask you a question, quick, before you get in there, Bruce. So we're just one entity out of how many, 13, that vote on this?
Right now, 11. If the hospital district comes in, it'll be 12.
Right. So, so you've got one entity that asked long ago for a forensic audit to be included in the budget, and it didn't happen. And now you're, we're standing here, and we've spent two hours arguing over the fact that it wasn't included in the budget, and you, you sent us a, a resolution that says if you want it, pay for it. And the council's saying, we'd like to spend the money that you've already collected to pay for it. Can we do that?
We'll do whatever my Board of Directors tells me to do. I hate to sound like a cop out, but I serve at the pleasure of the board.
But, but at the same time, if they don't adopt your budget, it's no, and nobody else, six other entities don't jump on board with it, it's no big deal.
Correct. My budget would be adopted, yes.
I mean, if, if it's just us that reject your budget, you know, it's no big deal.
But, but like you said, I want to build trust. I, I don't want you to disapprove a budget that I, that I put out there, which I think is a good budget. And I, and I hope that, you know, I can prove to you that, you know, there's no fluff in there. That, that money's going to be spent, it's going to be spent appropriately. We're going to provide a good service for you. So, yeah, from, from my standpoint, no, I don't, I don't want you to disapprove my budget just simply because the forensic audit wasn't, wasn't put in there. Because I've, I think I've produced a good budget.
Mr. Vale.
Mayor. First of all, Jeff, thank you for standing there for almost two hours, having this conversation with council. I, I had to slip out myself.
I didn't realize it had been two hours.
Obviously, I mean, there's a couple of things here. One is, you know, whether or not, when you guys have a fund balance, when you vote on it, if it's committed, or if it's obligated, whether the specificity is around that. I think we have a little conversation with the Attorney General's opinion. And I think one of the things you said, you know, moving forward, I, I think it's real important, you know, and we spend a lot of time on the city budget, not to say you guys don't, for HCAD or any of our other entities. But having the right, you know, bucket set up, certainly the retirement program really is very important to have funded, and you said you guys have been catching up to get that up to 90. I think the objective of, of all the entities, including the city council, is to make sure we have a tight budget as we move forward. We've worked really hard on ours. I do think that, that, you know, we have, one of the things in the budget is headcount, you know? And we rely on the city staff to look at the, look at the staffing, what the needs are. We put together our strategic plan, kind of figure out what that's going to look like. And there is some latitude in there. We have to have the right people in the right jobs to do the right thing to run the organization. I don't have a major issue with the budget. I mean, I, I think that, you know, I don't know all the roles and responsibilities of a deputy chief, and whether or not that's more important than another employee that you're, that you're going to have leave the organization. But that really, in my mind, that's for you to manage. And, and, you know, you have to be responsible for managing your organization. I do think that, you know, I, I did use the word amenable at the last time we got together and we talked about doing an audit. Forensic, whatever the terminology is, I think there are some things that we need to get under the hood on, and I think it's beneficial to you. I don't, I don't think any, I certainly don't expect you to, to be well-versed in, in every single thing that went on in 2018 prior to you getting here. I, I think you've done a lot of research, what I can see tonight, to really understand things that have happened in the past. But I think one of the things that was said here a minute ago is about building trust. And I think that you weigh that, one of the ways that you build trust is certainly transparency. And I think that going through and conducting an audit is a way to make sure that all these issues that we've talked about tonight and at the prior meeting, that get resolved. So there isn't any further questions moving forward, well, what happened with this? And what happened with that? And that you have a tight budget moving forward, and that we go back and we do an audit, we appropriate the funds, as Mr. Rodriguez said, and we put the audit in place, and we make sure that moving forward, you know, we understand everything that's going on as a taxing entity with the city, and I, I certainly recommend that we do that.
I appreciate your comments.
You know, I just want to say to this board, you know, Skip, Stephen, Bruce, and Greg, as your representative on the HCAD, you know, since, since I've been there, we've taken small, minute steps to improve the appraisal district, the policies, the procedures, the budgeting process, you know, we've made those steps, you know? What, and, and made, you know, one of those steps was to refund all this excess money, you know? The other thing that the mayor had questioned was the HCAD, the home office. We rescinded all meetings about the home office. That way, there was no questions whether or not there was a home office. We, we coordinated that, you know, that was something that the mayor had brought up, and we were amenable to that. You know, we're taking steps, and we're not saying that we won't, we don't want the forensic audit. We haven't sat down to negotiate or, or talk about the scope of work. He hasn't talked to the chief appraiser about a scope of work. He hasn't talked to me as a chairman, as a scope of work, and what does that cost? I just don't think, those, those two things are two separate items. I would say, let's take out the forensic audit out of this decision, that's a different decision. We can put that as another agenda item, saying, you know, to, to have it, have it on another agenda, to, to fund the forensic audit, after we figure out how much that forensic audit is. You know, we, we spent extensive time, just like the city has on their budget. It's called a budget, it's not called an actual, because we don't know what actually we're going to spend. We, we make, we make the best judgment on the budget to present it to the taxing entities, and, and that's a good representation that has been given to, to us as city council members in this package.
Let's just look at the last five years. That very tight, very good budget, $2,800,000 off, it's 20% off. I'm looking at 500,000, or it's about 15 to 20% less. I think it's imprudent, not prudent, of us with the history that we have here in front of us. And I, and I appreciate all that you've done, Mr. Law, because, yes, you have made significant improvements over there. But I think it's imprudent, not prudent for us to approve a budget with this history, that we are at a high probability of going back in at the end of next year and saying, no, you need to give us the money. Particularly when the disagreement that we have on how you handle excess funds is so, I mean, it's so striking. I'm saying, follow the law, return the money to the entities. It's their money, it's not yours. You're saying, no, you approved my budget, even though I didn't need this, it's my money, HCAD, it's our money, and we need to just commit it to something. And the entities have no say on that. The taxpayers have no say on that, because they have no elected officials in this area over here. So I, I, I can't, you know, I cannot do that to our taxpayer citizens. Why would I, why, no one should do that.
Can I respond just slightly quickly for, with, for you? The one thing that I would ask the council to be careful of is this. You, you are saying that there's a half million dollar delta between this budget and what maybe prior budgets should, should have been more like. In the past, the board had some, if you want to call them, projects that they were looking to, to fund, a, a potential building, and they, they had made the decision about retirement. That, that's gone.
But that's my issue.
Right, but that.
They made the decision.
Right, they made the decision back then, and then, and there, there was extra money that was needed. And I, again, I, I've tried to lay out, but I can't really speak to that. We don't, we don't have that going forward, and I, I would want the board to just be careful and mindful of the fact of the budget that I presented doesn't have any caveats built into it, that, oh, yeah, we're going to make sure we have enough money to fund, you know, the swimming pool that we want to put in in the back of the, back of the building, that nobody knows anything about, that type of thing. I'm, I'm making a joke. But, but it's, but it's, we don't have that now. And I would also say, from like a mediation standpoint, I think there is a way in which we could probably work something out to where if there, a, a project came up that we wanted to consider, that, yeah, absolutely, we come to the taxing entities and say, look, we're thinking about doing this, and we're thinking about using $100,000 worth of committed funds, or whatever the case may be. Do you object? I, I don't have a problem with that. Now, again, if it's, you know, one lawyer thinks one way, and a different lawyer thinks the other way, well, we can, we can meet in the middle. We can, we can come to an agreement of saying, this is the way we're going to handle it. Other appraisal districts may do it differently, but, but there's no, there's no thing that says we can't do things in a way that we both are happy with, and I'm, I'm good with that. But I, right now, I don't have a project in mind in which there will be excess funds earmarked for something else. That doesn't exist right now.
You guys ready to wrap this?
I, I just have one quick question, and hopefully I can get this straight in my own head. It looks like there's always excess revenues. It's somewhere around $200,000, $300,000 every year. No reason to think that there isn't going to be that same thing this year, although you've done a very good job of trying to provide for us how you prepared this budget. And then the way it's supposed to work out is that, at the end of the year, it should be just zero across the, the totals. But it probably won't be, it'll probably, there'll probably be excess, just like there is now. We don't even know how much this forensic audit is going to cost. I mean, somebody threw out this figure, $100,000, I have no idea. I don't know that anybody's done an RFP to a, to a firm that does this, and said, okay, how much is it going to cost us to do this for the last five years? But say it's $100,000, say it's $150,000, say it's $200,000. With all this excess revenue, though, it seems like we have every year, is there any reason, and are we under some kind of time constraints, that we can't just disapprove it tonight, you take it back, you guys put the forensic audit in it for whatever amount you find out it needs to be, and then bring that back to us, and we just approve that? Or are we under some kind of time constraints that you have to have this done now?
There is a time constraint. By the, from the time that they approved the audit, not from when they presented, but from the time that the HCAD approves the audit, we have 30 days to come back. It's 30 days, right?
Yeah, the time constraint's really on you. You have 30 days in which to act upon, and we approved ours August the 15th, so.
If we don't get six of the 11 entities to come back to you with a disapproval within 30 days, and that's, they have to have a meeting like this, they have to pass the resolution like this, and then they have to deliver it to your secretary within 30 days. So we have a very tight timeframe, I'm afraid.
If you were asking if I had a timeframe, it's, it's really the timeframe is on, on you all.
Well, so if we, if we disapprove it tonight.
Right.
When, when, something, then something else has to come back to us at a later date?
Well, no, as the mayor said, if you disapprove it, you disapprove it. But if, if the other, if five other taxing entities don't disapprove it, it's still approved. It has to be a majority of the taxing units disapprove it for it to become disapproved.
Six, six out of 11.
But, but we have, but we've had the others that have said that they do want the forensic audit, so.
Yeah, you've had two others that have said you want, they want the forensic audit.
But we don't, we don't even know if some of the other ones even knew about it, or if they've been told that they had to take some kind of action on it. But my point is just, is if we just disapprove it tonight, and then you, you go back, and then you put, put the forensic audit in the budget for this year for $200,000, or whatever it's going to be, and it looks like we're probably going to have excess funds anyway, because we always have had excess funds, and we just approve that budget? Because that's, that's got in of what we want, which is the forensic audit.
But I could, but I could still accomplish the same thing without the disapproval. I hear very emphatic, the, there's board members here, they, they hear emphatically what you're wanting from a forensic audit. You could approve the budget, and then I could go back at my next board meeting and say, I'm going to put something on the agenda to consider adding, amending the budget to add in the forensic audit. Or we could look at some of the excess monies that we, the, the fund balance that we currently have, and the board could say, you know what, we'll use that money. I've got $110,000 in committed funds, it's earmarked for technology, litigation, and building repairs, which, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to use some of that money for technology, and I need to use some of that money for building repairs. So maybe some of the $50,000 that's in the litigation committed fund could be used towards this. With regards to an RFP, I go, I'm under the same procurement rules that you are, and if, if the cost is less than $50,000, I don't have to do an RFP. If it's more than $50,000, then I have to do competitive bidding and do an RFP. And we don't know yet what, what the cost is going to be.
Or the scope. Or the scope, I'm sorry. Don't know the cost, you don't know the cost or the scope. Go ahead.
So Eddie, as the president then of the HCAD board, if we approve the budget tonight, and you, are you telling me that you can take it back to your board, and you'll recommend that they, that they do a forensic audit?
I will, I will take it to the board, or I'll tell the, the chief appraiser to put it on the agenda item for the board to consider adding that as an amended item to the budget. That's, that's option one, all right? Option two is to see what funds we have available to pay for this audit. All right? And if option one gives the ability for all the entities to weigh in on that decision. So it gives that opportunity for 11 entities, it, they will be notified, all 11 entities will be notified of what we're trying to do. Which means, it goes back to the point that they've been trying to make, is have they been all notified? No, they, I, we don't know if they all been notified about a forensic audit. But if we amend the budget, then they will all be notified what we're trying to do is adding a forensic line item in there. Or option two is to see what type of revenue we have within our current budget, and I will have to talk with the, the chief appraiser on what, how we can do that. And then all the entities are paying for it at that time. Those are, are two options. But if you don't, if you don't approve the budget, the appraisal district's budget tonight, we don't have those two, two options. Then we just have to wait out and see what all the other entities are going to do.
And if.
You'll know in 30 days.
Yeah, and you'll know in 30 days.
Actually, less.
And I, the, the, the options I'm trying to do is, is trying to appease the city's position in trying to get the, the forensic audit. But if, if this adopted budget passes, you know, then the audit is not in the budget. All right? The audit's not in the budget. Then the, the board can decide whether they want to do it or not. But in this case, I am giving you, I'm, I would recommend to the board the two options, to have it in the forensic audit as an amended budget item, or to see what type of funds we can accumulate, or where we can pull the funds out of to get the audit done. But we, like, there's so much work that goes into trying to get this audit done. You know, it's going to take some time. You have to get the scope of work correctly, you have to have legal advice input into it, and then you have to go out for RFPs based on the scope of work, and then get those bids back. It's not, it's not a, a, a fast process by any means.
Can I say something?
Sure.
So we had a budget. Tonight, we're, our last agenda item is to, to make amendments to our budget. I don't understand why your process wouldn't be the same. I don't like the, the idea of saying, I'm going to adopt a budget tonight, and then maybe an audit or something's going to happen down the road. I know you're, what you're saying, you're going to go to your board, and you're going to let your board decide. They could decide, no, we don't want to do it, but we got their approval, so we're good. And I'm just, I'm not comfortable with that.
Okay. All right. We have the proposed resolution, City of Granbury, to disapprove the Hood Central Appraisal District Board, Board Approved and Proposed 2025 Budget, and to request the refund of all excess surplus and reserve funds collected with any interest earned by the Hood Central Appraisal District from the taxing entities to be distributed back to the original taxing jurisdictions that paid them based on the same percentages as when they were paid, and to include in the revised budget a line item to pay for a forensic audit from fiscal year 2017 through fiscal year 2024. That is the resolution that we would look to approve. Do I hear a, or did, we would approve that motion, which disapproves the appraisal central district's budget. Do I hear a motion to?
May I make a motion to disapprove? Resolution 2409.
You make a motion to disapprove Resolution 2409. Do I hear a second? Mr. Corrigan, seconds. All in favor of disapproving Resolution Number 2409, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Nay. I hear five and one, nay. Is that right? Five and one, five and two, okay. Do I hear a, do I hear a motion to approve Resolution Number 2409?
So moved.
Mr. Wadley makes the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Vale makes a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. I hear six ayes.
Mayor, Carla, did, can you repeat what the motion?
Mayor, Carla, did, can you repeat what the motion was? Yeah, the mayor's. Okay.
Do I approve, or yea or nay? We have, you had no vote?
No vote.
I don't think you can do that. I think our rules.
Council rules require a yea or a nay.
Yeah.
Then I disapprove.
Okay, nay. So we have, the resolution passes, five and one. Mr. Rodriguez disapproved. So, Mr. Law left. Oh, there you are. Uh, I, thank you, you know, yeah, thank you. Thank you for your patience, thank you. And I'm sure we're going to have more and more conversations, and I just want all of the folks out here to understand that the conversations are positive and fruitful. We just have a disagreement on some items that are probably going to be resolved by others, not, certainly not me, or as an attorney or an accountant, so.
Well, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to, to speak and try to answer any questions you guys have. And again, my, my ultimate goal is to, is to move forward with, with trust from the city council, trust from all the taxing entities in Hood County, and just to do our job as required by law. And we, you know, that's why they say lawyers are practicing, right? They practice every day and learn something new, and that, and we're no different. We learn something new all the time. So thank, thank you for hearing me out.
Safe travels home.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move to item number seven, seven point four. Consider approving a new sublease agreement between the City of Granbury and the Hood County Genealogical and Historical Society, and authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the agreement with the Hood Cent, with the Hood County Genealogical and Historical Society and the Fort Worth and Western Railroad. Mr. Corfman?
Thank you. Been a long wait to get to this point. I apologize that y'all came to sit through all that, but you probably needed to hear all that too, so thank you for being here. Uh, we, we received some calls in the past and some concern, and some of you had voiced that concern to me, to look into the parking situation. Also heard from Ms. Dooley. And so at this point, what I'd like to do is have Ms. Dooley kind of tell us from her perspective what needs to happen for the city and for her tourism department. And then, uh, like for Michael Ross, deputy city manager, to come and explain where we're at and how we got to where we are tonight, and the importance of what we're doing. But maybe the most important thing that we could do, instead of that original plan, was allow our city attorney to point out something that he has seen in the current lease agreement that may change this whole conversation.
Yeah, but, thank you, Chris.
Stand there for a minute, ma'am.
Um, I, I, I have to admit, some of the comments earlier were very confusing to me. I didn't, I, I wasn't really comprehending what was going on with some of the public comments. There, there is in, in no way the offering of this new lease in any way an intent to try to shut anyone down. So I was, I was a little taken aback by that. The, the, the original lease that the city has with the railroad specifically lays out what it's for, and it says specifically, it's for civic use, civic use, and historic, historic preservation, right? Okay, that's, that's great. We, we contacted the railroad way back in the eighties and said, here, here's, here's what we're going to do. We have an idea. We have this entity that wants a sublease, and they want to put a museum in. And they said, great, you, you do that. And so nineteen eighty-three, this lease was executed. I combed through the lease that we have with the railroad, I combed through the sublease. There, initially, there were some complaints about the lack of ability to use the parking area. Maybe some chains, some sort of fencing put up, something like that. And so, uh, Michael and I started having a little bit of conversations about this, and where do we go with this, and what do we do with it? And, um, as I look through the, the lease and the sublease, um, there's, there's, there's a slight difference in the two, and I think there has been maybe for years a misunderstanding of what the sublease actually says. Okay? We leased the entire property from the railroad, and that includes the parking area. Okay? That parking area is used for civic use. It's a parking area. What we subleased to the entity is only the building. It is not the entire property or premises. It specifically says it in the sublease, it is limited to the bill, the building. So that parking lot, and granted, this is nineteen eighty-three, when this was, this was, you know, executed, right? The laws change, um, ordinances get adopted, the legislature, they're constantly updating things, telling us what to do. So what we have here is also a conflict with zoning ordinances. That, that, that lot is in the central business district, and zoning laws tells us that we, because of where it's located, it is open parking. That's the law. We can't privatize that parking. We can't even put up a sign and say, you can only park here from this time to this time, or we'll have you towed, because, we can't. Because of the zoning laws. So we put together what we thought was, hey, here's, here's a new lease, we'll get updated with the law, we'll, we'll get everyone on board, um, we'll, we'll put this together. And then tonight, of course, I'm hearing all this, and I, and I'm thinking, well, the, the parking lot was never part of the original lease to begin with. It, 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 nowhere in there does it talk about it. It, and in fact, it specifically says, building number one, it was the building that was leased. And because of the conflict in the zoning laws, we, we don't have a choice. We can't even say to anyone, whether it's the pub or whomever, yep, we'll lease you that property, and you can put up a sign that says, only your customers can park there. That would be against the law. We would be violating all of, all of our own zoning ordinances and state law. Can't do it. So, uh, put together a lease, hey, let's, you know, let's get started over on this, let's move forward and, and put together a new lease, and I, I guess the parking is what has been the issue, but for us to even consider giving a lease that privatizes that parking lot, you are in violation of the law. Cannot do it.
How's that feel?
I have some great tourism information.
So, so it's, it's in the central business district.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a publicly leased property. It makes perfect sense what he's saying to me, and I'm just sorry that it took this long for us to figure that out. So, um, well, Michael, you got something you want to say?
Well, an idea, if it's viable, I'll, I'll give it a shot. If you want to hear tourism first.
Nah, I think we fast forward to you, Tammy. In the spirit of time, we have fast forwarded.
Well, you'll, you'll see that they requested action.
Great presentation, Tammy, thank you very much.
Uh, part of the presentation here, and it's in your packet, are the bullet points about what's in the new agreement. Of course, one of those, one of those bullet points was parking related, which could be stricken, or should be stricken, according to Jeremy. The rest could stay in, that could be stricken, and the city manager could, as the recommendation goes, could carry out that action and finish that negotiation, minus the parking component at the rest.
Want you to review those bullets for the audience?
Sure. The following items were added to the new sublease agreement. Requirement that the society use the property as a museum, and for the preservation of historical documents and artifacts, and as a repository for ancient documents. Number two, the new term for the sublease shall be ten years versus in perpetuity, which is what the, the original one was. A ninety-day notice instead of a thirty-day notice to terminate by either party. The city will contribute to the society twenty-five hundred dollars per year to help with the utility costs associated with the society operations. Parking would have been next. City shall maintain the building grounds and parking lot, and the society shall maintain all furniture and fixtures and equipment placed in the leased premises, which they already do. City shall maintain the building's HVAC system, that's not in the current agreement. And, and the society shall maintain the building and the utilities, and shall pay the utility bills associated with the building, with the building, which they already do. Updated insurance requirements to current standards and provide proof of this insurance. And the new agreement also includes a signature spot for the Fort Worth Western Railroad. And I, I echo what Jeremy is saying, nothing, we, the city completely shares the desire for the, the society to continue to operate in perpetuity at the railroad depot. That's, nothing has ever been said by the city otherwise.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So Jeremy, the, the contract that we have in our packet is not the correct one, is that right? Because.
But the, yes, the parking aspect, but the action item is to authorize the city manager to facilitate the final negotiations and sign something. But I'm not sure they want to sign anything.
Okay, but the parking lot usage, they can.
We've got to strike that.
You got, that's what I'm talking about. So that's, this is not the. The current contract.
That, that one bullet point, if Jeremy concurs.
This just changed tonight, on the fly.
Right.
So the, the agreement that is in your packet spells out what's in these bullets. Okay? And what he's saying is we, Jeremy's saying, if we're going to adopt this agreement, we need to strike anything to do with the public parking or the private parking.
And Ms., is it Ms. Nace?
Nace.
Nace.
Microphone.
Ms. Nace, are y'all amenable to sign this new lease with the new information that you've received today?
I think we have some questions.
Well, that's why we could negotiate.
Step her up, step up to the microphone, Ms. Nace, and ask your questions. Well, we're asking you to, so. I'm sorry, mayor.
No, I, I understand.
I'm not necessarily the person that should be involved in this. I am the historian, I'm a treasurer, but I have the longest time with this group. One of the questions, if this is considered civic use, does that mean you will be permitting other groups to come and put events on that parking lot?
It's for parking.
I understand that, but we have already been blocked out because someone else used it for an event.
What, what event was that?
The group across the street did a classic car.
Oh, so you had cars parked in there?
Mm-hmm. And then proceeded, because y'all permitted them to have a tent on their parking lot, everybody else parked on the other parking lot. We've lost three St. Patrick's Day weekends where we could not even get into our own building. We've lost the Fourth of July's. We can't pay the utilities if we can't get volunteer availability and have people come. That's not conceivable. Twenty-five hundred dollars does not put a dent in the utilities.
What's the utilities cost annually?
Anywhere, well, it, it obviously depends monthly. Um, anywhere from a hundred and twenty-nine to four hundred some dollars. That's just the electric and the water, where we only have cold water, we don't even have a hot water heater. Atmos gas just billed us last month a hundred and thirty-seven dollars, and the month before a hundred and thirty-four, and we don't even use gas in the summer. It's only for heat. We're not sure what's going on there.
So that's roughly about seven thousand, about seven thousand in utility costs for gas and electricity?
Probably. We've cut out the phone, we have cut out every possible other thing we can. We pay all of the expenses on all of the copier, the paper, all of that kind of stuff, comes out of our pockets. If we have donations, it's great. If we don't, we still try and provide it for the citizens and the people that come.
Who currently pays the utilities?
We do.
Okay.
The city, under Nin Hewitt, when he was mayor, agreed to give us twenty-five hundred dollars out of tourism money. We had asked them to, for the city to actually take over utilities, because at that point, some of us were funding it one hundred percent out of our own pockets. By the way, the insurance also comes out. I forgot to add that into the expense that we pay.
Y'all keep a log of how many visitors?
Yes, sir, we do.
How many, how many visitors have shown up?
This year alone, two hundred and five to date, well, that's not including the last day or so, two hundred and five when I counted earlier, I guess, end of last week. Last year was a little over four hundred. Before COVID, we were averaging seven hundred to a thousand.
Other questions?
Chris, what does it look like if we can increase that, that, that budget for the utilities? What is, what does that look like for the council?
Take it out? We could, you know, take it out of the contingency fund, so it's not that big a deal.
And, and I'm just.
I think, I think those, the, to keep them there is important.
Right.
We've all advocated for that. We, we love what they do. But whenever you, whenever you have citizens come to your town and need a place to park, and there's a vacant parking lot with a chain on it, it doesn't make much sense when the.
That chain was, I'm sorry, that chain was not put up until we were completely forced out.
I understand.
We let anybody park there for forty years with no questions asked.
So kind of in your perspective, giving us your perspective, that way I can understand your side.
Mm-hmm.
What, what would be the most reasonable parking accommodations for the citizens to use your, that area?
We had no problem sharing it until we were completely overrun. We had a promise of a two hundred dollar donation for an event. We never saw a penny. Okay, it's donation money, we can't make people pay us. We are not the ones that put the no parking or you'll be towed, or museum parking only, you'll be towed. The city actually put that up to try and help us. We thought that was not a message we wanted to send to tourists and even locals, because it's not like there's a phone number that says, oh, you lost your car, call this number. People could have come out and their car would have been gone had we called tow trucks. We opted not to do that to support tourism, and in return continually got parked out, parked out, parked out. I would like to say it won't happen every day. I don't think that it will. I understand event weekends can be problematic. We all deal with that. We'd work around that somehow. But we're not the only, um, parking lot. We're not even the closest one to the square, if you're talking about people parking on our lot and going all the way to the square. There's a closer parking lot that, except for event days, sits pretty much empty all the time, just like ours did.
Mr. Wildley?
So the event that happened there, this is, I guess, a question for Chris, or Michael. Did we permit an event on that lot?
No, across the street.
So the, the event was across the street, everybody just used your parking because there's no place else to park?
Oh, classic car, I can't speak to whether you permitted that to be allowed on our lot.
Were the classic cars in that lot?
They were on our lot, yes, sir. And we had agreed to that in cooperative spirit.
I, I understand, but.
I mean, we didn't know any better.
But with what we learned tonight, that, that couldn't happen again anyway, correct?
That's what I'm asking. That was my biggest concern.
Because it's not.
It's public parking. Everybody can park there.
But you.
But they can't hold an event there, they can't reserve the lot and hold an event.
They did not reserve the lot for the event.
They just have it.
They just parked there.
No, they, they sponsored it. I have the email saying that that was the intent. It was fully well-sponsored.
Who sponsored it?
The pub. And we agree.
But they don't need a permit to do that, though, right?
Pardon?
I mean, the, the city doesn't require a permit, correct?
I have no idea. They hold them down at Hewitt Park, they've held them on the Courthouse Square. I don't know what it takes.
Okay. I, I think the answer would be it depends. If classic cars are parked in parking spaces in a public parking lot, they wouldn't be violating anything and wouldn't need a permit, in my opinion. If they were, if they were putting up tents and blocking parking spaces off, and, and you, people couldn't use, utilize the, the, the zoned public parking, then I think they would.
So similar to what we do to Lone Star Street Rod Association at Hewitt Park, right?
That's a definite public, uh, permitted event.
That's a permitted event.
Absolutely.
Some of it's on the grass, some of it's in the parking spaces.
Right.
I, I just had a couple of comments. I mean, I've had an opportunity to go down and tour the train depot, and I think Karen was there. I've been through the, been through the jail, I was allowed to leave, that was nice.
Big mistake.
But I, I mean, I think the, what they provide to the city and the character of the city, I think is very important. I do understand, you know, the background of all the materials and how they, how they got them, and, 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 you know, they're the caretakers of them, and I think it is important, this is, somebody said it earlier, this is where Texas history lives, and I think it is important to preserve that. lives, and I think it is important to preserve that. I certainly do understand, you know, it's a public parking area. I, and, and I guess I wonder, you know, is there an opportunity in that lot to put up some signs and say, "This is reserved," or something for the train depot? If somebody chooses to park there, you know, we can't enforce it, but that may just be an opportunity to provide a courtesy out to the people that are going to use that parking, parking lot, to not park in those spaces to make sure that they've got some, they've got some room to park their vehicles in there. Again, those are just signs and, and, you know, that we can't enforce that, but that might give somebody pause to say, "Well, you know, we really shouldn't park in that spot. That's reserved," or, you know, "We request reservation for that spot for the, for the train depot." Just a thought.
I believe the parking problem, and it was, excuse me, was, was touched on, was primarily related to the construction and the construction workers during that period of time when the pub was under construction. I have watched video for about the last two weeks, 24/7, that we've had a camera there, watched the activity in and around the parking lot, the street, the pub, everyone coming and going from that parking lot and the parking. There are no parking issues today, based on the last two weeks of 24/7 observation. There's a single car that typically comes in the one to four timeframe when they're open. In the two weeks that I watched, the one car left close to 4:00. And that was the activity for the last couple of weeks. There was no cars that came the last two Saturdays, which would typically be the busiest day of the week.
Yeah. I would imagine, I would imagine, with the exception of, I don't know, a handful of events or holidays, St. Patrick's Day will be a busy one. That, that parking lot would probably be full on a St. Patrick's Day. That's just my speculation. I was there when they had the car show, just walked around a little bit. I can't recall how many spaces they took up. But I think, you know, probably with the exception of some events, as we move forward, there will probably be adequate parking there. I, I do know the issue about the construction and kind of the, how that all happened, but again, I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity to put some signs up, hold some spaces, just as a courtesy out to people that are parking in the parking lot, to say, "Hey, you know, please don't park here. This is, you know, this is the train depot. We've..." I can't, really can't say that, but these are spots that the train depot would like dedicated to the people, both their staff and guests that come in. That may be a, that may be an amenable, my favorite word now, amenable solution to that, but again, not enforceable.
Do we have other questions for Michael or Ms. Nace or anyone?
I have another question. Is that a private property on the railroad? Do they not have to say, oh, whether that can or cannot be a parking lot? Jerry?
We need you at the microphone, Mayor.
The, the, the answer is no, because they, they may be the actual owner, but the city is, is the owner per the lease.
The railroad can stop that in 30 days also.
They certainly can terminate it if they choose to enact the provision from the lease.
Sure.
Okay. Then it would cease to be a parking lot, which, which we are not advocating that. We're not advocating that. We would like to stay open, but it's become untenable. To say we haven't been there is pretty hard to take, because I'm not sure how your cameras work. I was there nine to six last Thursday, a week ago. This Thursday, I was there nine to four, meeting people. There were more than one, one car. We write it down. We have a written record of who was where. We were open Friday. You know, we try and get people to go.
He said we proposed on Saturday. That's what he said.
He said, "Nobody showed up Saturday."
That's because our volunteer doesn't come.
We're not complaining, we're just documenting what we saw on the video. And it's videoed, and we'll share that with you if you'd like. I mean, it's very clear, there's a white car in the parking lot. And Michael can show you some pictures right now.
I, I understand that.
With the timestamp, so...
I understand there wasn't anybody there Saturday, because our volunteer didn't make it.
There were, there were about seven of you there on Thursday for, for a time. We saw that on video. So, the video does work.
But according to your new lease, we can't be there on a Thursday, even though that's when the people need to be there. We can't have our Tuesday night meeting, which we have had for 40 years.
The new lease just says what time the reserved parking would be.
We, we have a...
No, it actually said we weren't to be in the building.
We have a...
We asked no question.
It does not say that.
As long as you, as long as you say that, are we still attaching our heirs and assignees and executors?
Ms. Nace, excuse me a minute. We have a, an agenda item to consider approving a new sublease agreement between the City of Granbury and the Hood County Genealogical and Historical, and to authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the agreement with the Hood County Genealogical and Historical Society of Fort Worth and Western Railroad. And I really would just like to not have the city manager and whoever finalize and execute the agreement here tonight. If we could go ahead and get a resolution or a motion to approve that, then we can start those negotiation process. Do I hear a motion tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Okay.
A lot of what was said, and I'll make that motion. A lot of what was said earlier implied that the city doesn't want you guys there. That's as far from the truth as you could be. The city definitely wants the, the society to stay at the train depot, you know, but, but we also have to follow the law and, and make, you know, try to make the parking lot work for everybody.
Going to make that motion?
And I will make a motion that we have the city manager work on a, finalize and execute an agreement with the Hood County Genealogical and Historical Society and the Fort Worth and Western Railroad.
Second. I hear a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Hearing no nays, passes six and a.
Ms. Nace, who, who would that be that we need to meet with? You said that there's somebody else that we need to talk to?
We have a president of these associations. There are not two associations.
Okay.
We combined them, as was explained earlier. We have an officers group. We have, the entire group will be meeting next week. So, and the railroad is meeting tomorrow.
You're meeting with the railroad tomorrow?
No, they are meeting about this. We've already met them.
Oh, okay. So, is there a time we need to set up to, for me to affect what we're talking about doing here? I mean, who do I call? You or the president, or what do I need to do?
Do you have a mistake? Yeah. I think I hold the president and ask, which went much longer than we anticipated.
And what is his name?
Alan Lash.
Lash, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Move to number 7.5. We'll discuss the final edits to propose fiscal year 2425 operating annual budget for the City of Granbury that were added since the budget workshop. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. So, the last budget workshop we had, since that time, we've got the final appraised values, and that caused the numbers to move a little bit, so I'll turn it over to Ava Gregory to walk us through the final changes to the proposed budget that you're going to vote on in September.
Thank you. Good evening, city council, city manager. We have prepared the agenda item to show you the changes that were incorporated into, in the proposed budget for fiscal year 2025. This budget is still proposed. It's on the review, and we'll, we will have a hearing, a budget hearing on September 3rd at 6:00 PM at a regular, regular city council meeting. And we presented the balanced budget to you on June 26th. Since, as our city manager mentioned, since June 26th, we received the final certified values, which were about 6% higher than the estimated values that we proposed to you on June 26th. So, we rebalanced the budget and we attached an attachment to your agenda item that shows what changed. So, one of the things that we have changed is the property tax revenues increased by 218,000. That goes into the general fund. We also have added 50,000 into a restricted tourist fund, because that changed as well. And so, that was on the revenue side for the general fund. On the expense side for the general fund, we were able to incorporate the grant fund thing for the Lambert Branch Park. As you remember, back on July 16th, our parks director presented to you on agenda item, an opportunity to apply for a Texas Wildlife Grant that would allow us to improve the Lambert Branch Park. And that was per the master plan that was adopted back in 2020. This is a great opportunity. The grant is $150,000, but the total expenditures related to the improvement of the Lambert Park is $350,000. So, 150,000 will be coming from the wildlife grant, and the other 250,000 was going to have to be met by the city. So, we are using these funds from the property tax revenues to fund the project. On the util, there were no changes on the utility fund side. On the tourism fund side, we increased the hot projection by $25,000, and we increased the interest projection by $15,000 to fund the carpet that you discussed at the budget workshop for the conference center. On the airport side, we have increased fuel projections, $90,000, to fund some vehicles for the airport, the courtesy vehicles for the airport, as well as discussed at the budget workshop. The other changes were related to receiving final proposals and estimates for expenditures for next year, so we were able to update the various departmental expenses based on these updated pricing. If you have any questions, please let me know. Again, the budget hearing is scheduled for September 3rd. Any other changes by council can be proposed at this time?
Questions? Go ahead. September 3rd is, when, if, should we pass this, that that's when we would approve or disapprove the annual budget?
Yes, sir. We'll have a budget hearing, and after that, the budget can be adopted.
And it becomes effective October 1st?
October 1st, yes.
Wow. I know you work on this all year, so I'm glad.
Yes, and we monitor it all year.
Any questions?
Yeah, the main thing is, just trying to be transparent with you, what we did with the final appraised values that came in and how we appropriated them, and it's in the budget document that you have, right?
Yes, sir.
Right.
It was already in the budget document.
But it was never explained to y'all in a public meeting, and I wanted to do that tonight, so... And also, hats off to Ava and her team for doing a great job, and we appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. Questions? No? Okay.
Before we adjourn, I have one announcement.
Well, don't we want to get this passed first? Okay?
It's just discussion.
Oh, it is discussion, okay. Mr. Kaufman has an announcement.
I would like to y'all to introduce Shay Hopkins to the crowd. I know many of you already know her, but first day on the job, and we've worked her a long time today, so...
So...
I promised her work-life balance, and here we are, already abusing everybody in the room, so, welcome aboard Shay.
Welcome Shay.
Yeah. We're, we're going to talk about some economic development in a minute. If you'll stick around, we'll take you in a closed session.
Yeah. Okay. Other comments? Anything? Okay. I now declare that the Granbury City Council is convened into open session. All members present, the city council will go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. Section 55107-1, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation; 55107-2, deliberation regarding real property; and 55108-7, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We are adjourned. Okay. I now declare that the Granbury City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in closed session, and all council members are present. Any other action?
No.
No? No? There is. Okay. There being no further business, I announce the meeting adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.